Let's get this thing going now. Sorry about being behind our storytelling, folks. I'll now call this regular meeting of the Fluvana County Board of Supervisors to order. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks very much. Before I ask the next question, Mr. Dahl, are there any changes we need to make?
I have one just discussion topic. I know how we discussed hazard pay previously for the sheriff's office in the E91. I just want to have a quick discussion with the board under unfinished business if that would be, if that would be allowable.
Alrighty. That will be, we'll hopefully be able to get that done before our dinner break.
I think we, I think we could, we could probably, we could probably add it after consent is done. If that's okay with the board.
Hazard pay. Just remind me to turn this thing over. And that would be under. Okay.
Yeah.
Well, unfinished old.
Yeah.
Alrighty. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda with the changes so made?
So made.
Motion made by Mr. Weaver, signed by Mr. O'Brien. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, chair votes aye. Motion, the agenda has been adopted. Now we've got a special presentation, Mr. Dahl.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I think we would like to have all the board members come down front. We've got a special recognition.
You want to read it first and then we'll.
I think we'll probably come down because I'm sure some other board members, we got, we got to have a mic down there as well. Let's hear it. There we go. So, Mr. Chair, members of the board. So, Mr. Thomas, would you please step up here? One, Willis Thomas has been part of this county, one, for many years, but a part of the Fork Union Sanitary. You can come on up here, stand up here. Been a part of the Fork Union Sanitary District since 1984. So, for his just years of invaluable service dedication to this county, I just wanted to read a plaque for his retirement. So, congratulations on your retirement. Willis L. Thomas, Jr., Utility System Supervisor. An appreciation of dedicated service to the county of Fluvana, specifically the Fork Union Sanitary District, April 1, 1984, October 31, 2021. Best wishes, best wishes for a long and happy retirement. Fluvana County Board of Supervisors, Fluvana County, Virginia. I think for Mr. Thomas to have served and, and, and one, provided just such a great benefit to this county for 37 years, it's something that, that doesn't happen that often. And I certainly want to thank him for, for everything he's done for the water system. I know he is, I know he has given up probably a lot of valuable time keeping that system pumping water, moving along and providing such a great service to this county. So, Mr. Thomas, I want to present you with that plaque. And I know Mr. Popowitz, and I'm sure there's some board members too that would like to say some words. Bobby, do you want to come up really quick?
So, on the top of this page, I prepared some words for you, Willis. But on top of this is Willis Thomas's words. And a lot of times when people talk about words, they talk about not having the words. In your case, words like integrity, dedication, honesty. They're all words describing. Yes, sir. It's rare that you find someone that's so dedicated, honorable, and has integrity. But today, standing in our midst is such a man, Willis Thomas. Willis has been a confidant, a mentor, the motivational coach for his team ever since I've known him. The men that work for him, more than respect. They do not want to disappoint. That doesn't say what it needs to say then. Come see him. He's been a rock when things were chaotic, and the confidence that he instills in his team is very evident. Willis, you should be very proud of your men, the ones that you guided and developed. They're still operating under the same principles you instilled to them, instilled in them during your time here at Fluvana County. Willis, I'm proud to have been your teammate. I appreciate your knowledge, but most of all, I appreciate your fellowship and the support you gave me. I wish you well on your new endeavors. I also hope you get to fish a lot more. And I hope that you're not a stranger. Thank you.
Board members.
I remember when you came to us. I mean, Jerome was on the board then. And, and Jerome believed so much in you, of course. You know, he's known you all, all your life, and you're family. We're all family. And I remember him always kind of, I don't want to use the word fighting, but being very assertive to make sure that you got a raise and that you were paid what you deserved. You probably never was, but at least, at least, at least he, 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 every time, he would always say, you know, Willis, Willis needs more pay. And so he would go to bat for you. We're going to miss you. I've seen you when you've been in the hole, when you're all digging. I never, I, your clothes are getting ready, what you do, just drop them in the floor. You couldn't even come home. But I, I never heard any complaining. You did, you worked 24 hours. You were always there and, and you taught your team the same way. And it is a very rare, you're very rare. You're just, you don't find people like that. It's very, that is so dedicated and giving their time. The system became a part of your life, a part of, you all became family. And when it was down and you, and you always thought about your customers. And that was, we've got to get this done. I remember when you all saw the case, when you went under the street somewhere with the academy. And I think you all came up with the idea of how to get that water where it needed to be. So you're a problem solver. And I've just watched you and I'm just proud of you. And I just hope that you will enjoy your retirement. And I know you love to tinkle, and I know you've done a lot of things with cars. I'll probably have some cars to have that you'd work on. But you have so many gifts and you have shown those and you've given those to Fluvana County freely. And I want to thank you. I'm glad that I know you and a part of your life.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Love you.
Thank you for your service. I don't know you as well. But I really appreciate the work you've done. And I have a nice pond in front of my farm. I'll give you my card so you know where to go.
I don't have a pond, but I like one.
Your dad, what's your dad's first name, was it?
Willis.
Willis. I worked with him and PTO. We've had a big time. He has been to my house and we've talked. Yeah. Great job you've done. You take care.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Alright.
I'm not going to be very long with it, but I just want to shake your hand because one word that hadn't been mentioned is gentleman. And you are truly a gentleman. And we never had to worry that we knew when we called you, you were going to do what was needed, when it was needed. And all I got to say for you two is you've been raised pretty doggone high. Thank you so much for everything. And when I retire from the school system, probably won't be too long. You and I getting together and go fishing.
Great.
And if any of y'all didn't hear any of the words that were said, we just talked about what a gentleman and what a privilege it's been as a county to have Mr. Thomas working for us. Next up, county administrators' reports.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, just got a few things to report here for you today. Some things, anyway. So we have a few new, few new employees that came on board in the finance department. So Teresa McKenny, she started on November 22nd in the finance department as a financial service specialist. Basically, she handles payroll. And then Io Williams, he started in the finance department too as the accountant. He started on November 22nd, I'm sorry, November 29th. He just started this Monday. So we're getting them all up to speed and trying to get the finance department back up to the levels of employees it needs to be. And we just, was one more position to fill, so.
One hat you get to take off.
Yes, exactly. Coming up here for, for at Pleasant Grove, we have the Pleasant Grove Community of Light Celebration. Again, that's at Pleasant Grove Park, basically by the Pleasant Grove House. It's going to be, it's going to be held between December 16th through the 19th from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM each evening on, on the Saturday night, December 18th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Santa will be there to take pictures with the kids. And so again, kind of like we did last year, you know, we, we kind of wanted to pivot to do some type of a, you know, holiday celebration for the county. So, you know, Mr. Spitzer came up with a great idea to kind of do a drive-through light show at Pleasant Grove Park. And, you know, in, in the short while that we had last year to do it, you know, we got some good traction. But I think we're going to get a lot better traction this year, and there's going to be more lights. So a lot of groups are coming up with some great ideas. And again, Fluvana County Parks and Rec is still looking for businesses, organizations, group clubs, scout troops, churches, families, whoever want to do their own light display. Fluvana County Parks and Rec will supply the electricity. And it, it's a free event, but you know, just to make sure that we're, we're registering everyone. Registration deadline is December 12th, and there's an online registration at the link below, or they can contact Parks and Rec at 589-2016, or email er, ermatrot@fluvana county.org. So again, looking for another great holiday celebration at Pleasant Grove Park. I'm not going to go through and, and read every single name here, but you know, we're, we're coming to the point here where we have some great community service awards for employees. We will be celebrating and, and reading these names out and giving certificates at the holiday, at the Fluvana Holiday Luncheon, which is on December 17th, and we'll have some more information for that. But again, you know, congratulations to those employees that have five years of service, 10 years of service, 15 years of service. And then, then we have some long haulers too. Mr. Hayslip, 25 years of service. Dennis James, 30 years of service. Sandra Parrish, 45 years of service. And our treasurer, Linda Lenhera, 50 years of service. So again, this kind of goes back to, kind of goes back to what we just discussed about Willis Thomas. You know, we've got some great, great staff that have really been dedicated to this county for a long time and have provided a great service to the community.
What's the date?
It's December 17th. And I think, Caitlin, there's a slide.
I'm only laughing because that's another employee's birthday.
Yes, I know which one. Also, so as we reported previously, the library is giving out no-cost rapid COVID-19 antigen at-home test kits at the Fluvana County Library. Library card's not available. They're easy, easy-to-use test kits at home. Remember, the library staff is not going to be assisting with this. They've been giving out 40 to 80 tests daily, which is just absolutely amazing. And I'm sure they're going to probably ramping that up, you know, since the holidays have passed and holidays are coming up. Like I said, it, it's a great thing that they're doing. You know, they're always looking for new ways to provide a service to the community. If you want to get one, you'll just need a valid photo ID and a computer, mobile phone, or tablet, or whatever, to kind of upload the results and all that. And again, as, as we discussed, the 2021 Fluvana County Employee Holiday Luncheon will be held at the Terry's Brook Gym, December 17th, from 11:30 to 1:30 PM. Again, you know, this will be honoring employee service milestones and employee, and employee of the year. You know, we certainly hope that you all would make it. And, and, and I think there's one, there's one board member, we're going to have to try and specifically get there because someone was talking about a T-bone steak. We'll have to work on that one.
You haven't forgot.
No, of course not. But again, you know, like I said, we didn't do a holiday luncheon last year because COVID, but not that it's gone away, but you know, we wanted to try and celebrate the employees and recognize them. And, and we're doing it at the gymnasium just so we have a little more space this year. And just looking at some upcoming meetings here, so December 15th, we have a 7:00 PM regular meeting. In addition, board members, you have a, you have a card that's, that Ms. Lee's placed right in front of you for some board members. So we may have something a little special early for, for a particular board member that is, is deciding to not seek, that had been secretly election this year, that's, that's retiring from the board. So we certainly hope that you all will be there for that. And what time was that at Kelly? At 5:00 o'clock.
It's got 5:30 on here.
5:30, yeah.
Yeah. If you could be here a little early, but yes, 5:30 is the official time. Yes. But the, so upcoming meetings, we have 7:00 PM. We have a regular meeting at 7:00 PM. January 5th at 5:00 PM, we'll have our organizational and regular meeting here. Also at 7:00 PM, we will have nonprofit presentations. January 19th at 5:00 PM, we'll also have nonprofit presentations. And then at 7:00 PM, we'll have the regular meeting. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board has.
Are there any questions from the board? I'm going to add one more thing on there. I got this invitation. I'm sorry I didn't send it to you. But some of the ladies down at Columbia are doing a. A gift give out. And they said if any of the board members would like to come down on December the 11th, at Columbia Baptist Church from 12 to 3:00, it's a Saturday. They're having a drive-through Christmas gifts and dinner for our seasonal saints and children. So if anybody would like to come down. Anybody's got a Santa suit I can borrow?
Well, we, we, we potentially may.
If we got a Santa suit. Oh, that's my man. Alright. So I guess I can send the word to Ms. Tinsley. But that is going to be Saturday, the 11th, at Columbia Baptist from 12 to 3:00. I'm sorry to bring it up, but she said to invite any of the board members who would like to come. Alrighty, thank you, Mr. Dahl. Alrighty. Now, I will open up the first round of public comments. Anyone wish to address the board? Please keep your comments to five minutes on topic and direct to the board. And if you are wishing to speak on tonight's public hearing, I will ask that you wait until the public hearing time to do for that. This is for anyone else that has stuff that they would like to speak, speak on. Is there anyone at this time at the present that would like to speak? Okay, is there anybody online, Ms. Harris? Unmute if you would like to speak, so we know you want, I don't want to stop this before anybody has a chance. Alrighty, seeing none and hearing none, I will now close the first round of public comment. That's, you got me messed up on that one. That's a 7 o'clock, or I got to go past that. Now we're moving down to action items. A resolution amending temporary, A, a resolution amending temporary emergency personnel policy to address COVID-19 and ARPA, the snow.
As we discussed prior, this is for the realignment of the AD COVID sick leave hours under the ARPA. Eligible county, county employees to be used from July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2022, with the eligibility determined and required under the new stipulations that are required and set forth by the Board of Supervisors, and also an ARPA qualifying event that is approved by the county administrator or, or his designee. We're requesting a formal resolution extending the time period to use this benefit to be adopted by the board.
And, and just, just as an extra, you know, again, back when we did this before, under the Families First Coronavirus Recovery Act, these are, you know, items one through six. Those are some of the items that pertain, you know, if the employee is subject to federal state, local quarantine, advice from healthcare provider to quarantine, experiencing COVID symptoms. Is it the workers that care, is caring for an individual subject to COVID for, under the first two qualifying reasons, school or daycare closed down or anything like that. And, and, and we're, we're making this retroactive back to July 1. Since these past, well, at this point, five months, we've had a lot of employees, not an overabundance, but we've had a lot of employees that have gone out due to COVID. And, you know, just from a, from a sick leave standpoint, by no fault of their own, if they have to use 80 hours of sick leave of their own personal sick leave from what they get a year, I mean, it basically leaves absolutely nothing left for any other medical reason. So I think just from a, you know, kind of holding employees harmless from, from the pandemic, you know, we're asking that the board kind of extend this and kind of re-up it again from, from going back to July through June 30th. And, and if we see that there's a need to continue again, if, if, you know, Delta variant's been here and, and what's the new one? Omicron, that's coming through. So, you know, I just think it's, it's a good thing for employees to kind of hold them harmless. And, and again, this would be utilized, we would be utilizing, you know, if, and this is kind of qualifier under harm.
Any questions or concerns? Okay. Do you have a motion?
I move that the Board of Supervisors approve a resolution amending temporary emergency personnel policy to address COVID-19 and ARPA, ARPA, as presented.
Do I have a second? Motion has been made by Ms. Ziger, signed by Mr. Weaver. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, ma'am. B, deer hunts for handicapped hunters at Pleasant Grove.
I'll go ahead and handle this. Mr. Payne is not here.
I was going to say, either you or I want.
I'll phone a friend with Mr. Spitzer if I need to ask.
Mr. Spitzer, just come on down and be prepared.
So, so again, we're not doing anything different or a big change. Again, you know, the sheriff's office continues to believe that, you know, doing a hunt for handicapped individuals at Pleasant Grove Park is a, is a great way to manage the deer population. Again, the Wheeling Sportsman is the, is a group affiliated with the National Wild Turkey Federation. They'd be, again, kind of sponsoring this, putting it on. Again, the proposal is, is, is to permit a small group, maybe seven to 10 individuals. And, and you know, Mr. Spitzer can certainly speak to that. And again, all hunters will be wheelchair-bound or otherwise handicapped, will be duly licensed, and will be escorted by qualified volunteers from the community. Looking at the map and looking at some of the, the hunting blinds, you know, it, it's going to be pretty similar to last year unless, as Mr. Spitzer's going through, notices anything different that has to be done. But.
We might move the one at the caretaker's house.
Yeah.
To the maintenance shed in the back. There's a couple of deer coming out back there, so.
How did we do last year? Deer count?
Two, I think. Two, maybe three. But it was really, really cold day last year, if I remember.
Here's my only question about it. I know we have always done it on the day, next to last day of the season.
Yep.
Is there any way we could ever do it earlier just because the weather's so.
They usually have hunts already scheduled, so it's kind of how.
Wherever they tell us.
They could have done it on Christmas Eve this year. I wasn't trying to do it Christmas Eve, so we, I'd rather do it New Year's Eve personally. So that's why we ended up doing it New Year's Eve. But they have a schedule of kind of where they go different places to be able to do it throughout the weeks of hunting season, so.
I, I didn't know if there was a way, because I, I've been walking around out there and it's.
So, and I'm trying to figure out how to get them into the woods a little bit. And I can almost do a couple of them with the track wheelchairs on our disc golf course, but I haven't gotten that far yet. But we're trying to get them actually into the woods a little bit if we can.
Being protected a little bit from it.
Um, the deer don't come out so early. I've been noticing even on my own property this year, they're coming out at night. So they're not coming out in the fields till it gets dark. So we want to, we got to try to get in the woods a little bit to get them before they get out in the fields, if that makes sense.
Again, you know, I think this is, how many years in a row have we done this now? 10 at least.
10, probably. It's been a while. And all of the, I just got the last report to beat out to close the park. So we're, we should be on schedule to be able to do this.
Alrighty, thank you very much. I know we've been doing it every year since we've been on the board.
And they're very appreciative, so.
And, and no other questions? Who would like to make this motion?
I have, excuse me. I move that the Board of Supervisors authorize the sheriff to conduct a deer hunt at Pleasant Grove for the purpose of controlling deer numbers. Such hunt to be managed by Wheeling Sportsman, a nonprofit organization providing outdoor recreation opportunities for handicapped hunters. Second.
Motion's made by Ms. Booker and seconded by Ms. Ziegler. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion passes 5-0. C, FY21, FY22, budget carryover request. Ms. Milton.
Good evening. How are you? I am here tonight to discuss the FY21 to FY22 carryover requests for the county. So the, the county has a policy for carryover requests that, in summary, those amounts are necessary for the continuation of operations and projects or services that may be requested by departments for reappropriation to the budget. And such requests shall be for specifically defined projects that could not reasonably be started or completed prior to June 30th. So in other words, according to our policy, these were already budgeted items in '21 that we could not complete or start for circumstances usually out of our control, and that would qualify to be a carryover. Typically, there are four reasons that department asks for carryovers. The first one being the project was started in '21, but again, not able to be completed, or the project was not started in '21 due to circumstances out of our control. Both would meet our county policy. There are also times when departments request carryovers for funds where the funds pertain to cover certain one-time or special capital projects that are not already approved or funded in that year, or they want to carry over FY21 remaining funds for new or unanticipated projects or operating expenses not included in the FY22 budget. Those do not meet our county policies. So currently, we have nine department carryover requests. And I believe most people are here tonight that could answer any questions we have on those. But I will start with E911's request. They are requesting to carry a total carryover amount of $26,935, $10,120 of that to be carried from their professional services line, budget line, I'm sorry, for the tower inspections. They were not able to be completed in FY21 due to contract negotiations with the vendor. They are going to request that those be completed going forward by the end of the fiscal year. But if we do not carry those funds over, then they would be completely over budget. They are also asking to carry over $16,815 for the road signs. Last year's budget for road signs was $23,000, but there was an error with Excel where that amount was not carried over. And they have seen an uptick in the request for road signs due to construction. Next slide.
That was a carryover where, at $16,815?
Um, it looks like in last year's budget, they had requested $23,000, but there was an error with the Excel spreadsheet. So I believe only 293 was, was carried over, but they did request more than that.
So you made it up from.
Yeah, they had unexpendable funds in this past year, in this past year, in that line. So they're just. Yeah, they, they had unexpendited funds in this past year, in this past year in that line, so they're just. Well, not in that line, they had unexpendited funds within the budget. But to, to, to account for trying to make sure that those road signs can be replaced, they're requesting that be. Pulled into this year's budget for road signs specifically, but they had other budget lines that were unexpended in twenty-one.
So the next carryover request is from the Sheriff's Department. They are asking to carry over eleven thousand dollars from their vehicle fuel line. With the increase in fuel costs, they're spending approximately a thousand per month. And they're anticipating a shortage in their fuel line for the remainder of twenty-two. The next carryovers for the convenience center, they are asking to carry over thirty-seven thousand eight hundred. Twenty-five thousand of that from their site improvement lines. Due to, um, the Republic contract not being ratified. And they are required, they're requiring them for twenty-two in order to finish that. As well as twelve thousand eight hundred for the building's equipment and repair line. Again, the, um, utilization from the contract not ratified, they will need those funds for the upcoming year in order to finish that work.
Yeah, for this one specifically, these funds were budgeted in twenty-one. And so in order to save some costs, we've been in negotiations with, with, um, Republic or Allied. Um, for quite some time and then there's, there's some back and forth going on. Um, so the work that they anticipated doing, um, couldn't be started in, in fiscal year twenty-one. So once we get a contract in place, they're gonna need these funds to kind of complete some of the site improvements out of the convenience.
So Human Resources is asking to carry over six thousand three hundred and thirty-nine dollars. For a thousand two hundred and eighty of that for the employee recognition. Last year, we were unable to recognize them, the employees who hit milestones due to COVID. So they've had to purchase extra gifts this year and plaques in order to honor those employees. They are also asking to carry over one thousand four hundred and forty for the recruitment. We've had several open positions this year and sponsor fees with indeed an outside job boards have increased. Um, as well as six hundred and nineteen to perform Virginia State Police background checks. As we, right now, we have to run them in, before employment and then every ninety days, but going forward, we would like to move those to every twelve months. And our final carryover request is for social services. They are asking to carry over five thousand this year. They found out that they have to replace their server and that was a completely unexpected, um, purchase for this year, so it was not budgeted. And so they're asking to carry over what's remaining from twenty-one to twenty-two for that.
So on, on these two, um. Again, so this is the whole thing. If, if the Board said we're. We're interested in approving all of the totals eighty-seven thousand. Again, we're finishing up the audit right now. We are certainly. Far, far under budget from where we were this past year one, cause, uh, terrorist funds offset a lot of our, um, some of our salary lines. Um, and again, some of these, again, some of these meet policy, some of them don't meet policy. But, uh, in this list right here, even the ones that don't meet policy, the Board has approved. Carryover request prior that still don't meet policy. And I'll just use, uh, one example. Um, you know, the sheriff's vehicle fuel, you know. One, it doesn't meet policy, it wasn't budgeted this year, but it's kind of an unexpected increase with, with, with the cost of fuel going up and stuff like that. Um, looking at social services, one, um, for machinery and equipment, again, they didn't budget for it this year, but with the server needing to be replaced. It's, it's an unexpected, um, uh, upgrade that needs to happen. So again, it, it's a one-time cost. It's not going into paying for ongoing operational costs or anything like that. So.
How much over is going to be on the sheriff fuel, you say?
Well, again, they're saying, they're, they're saying that they're looking at about another, about another thousand dollars.
I mean.
Then what they budgeted.
What's basically thirty-five percent more than what they've been needing? Yeah. It's gone tremendously.
So again, so if the Board's so inclined to approve all these, I, I would just ask them to. To approve the motion through items A through I for a total amount of eighty-seven oh seven four, but if not, we could. We could certainly come up with some calculations if, if.
Does anyone, anyone want to pull anything specific to discuss?
No.
No, we've done this before, haven't we?
You have, we do, we, we do it every year at this time. And again, sometimes, you know, the Board's approved it for, for some larger things, but these are just kind of some. Some of them are a little unknown and some of them just with COVID things, this didn't, weren't able to get completed in the previous fiscal year.
Okay.
You like, does anyone want to make this motion?
I'll make it. I move the Board of Supervisors approve the following carryover requests of year twenty-one. Unexpected budget lines from the listed departments. To the year twenty-two department budget lines as specified, and in the amount listed below, the total amount of eighty-seven thousand seventy-four dollars.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's made by Mr. Weaver and seconded by Ms. Booker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. Next up, appointments. D, Boards Commission.
So. So I, I, I hope I wasn't confused on this. So the last meeting. The Board, again, we brought forward an appointment for, for Mr. Sheridan to be appointed to the James River Water Authority. Last meeting, the Board requested to defer this until the December one meeting. And, and, and unless we missed something and we went back and listened to the audio. There wasn't any direction to, to, to go out and seek, um, additional applicants like we normally do. Now, if the Board wants to approve Mr. Sheridan, they could. If they want to get a more. Um, competitive applicant pool, we can do that. Um, since that time, we have received, which. Haven't been in the package because it wasn't requested for new applicants. Um, but we've received two applicants during this time, so. Again, I, I guess the big question is if, if the Board either wants to appoint Mr. Sheridan. You know, that, that's the route we go, or if we want to get a more competitive pool to see who's out there, then we would more actively. Um, put the call out for, for those that want to serve on the James River Water Authority. In addition to that, uh, Mr. Chesser, uh, who's on the James, is on the James River Water Authority Board too also right now. His term expires December thirty-first of this year. Now, I've, I've talked to Mr. Chesser and, and he is seeking reappointment. But again, the Board could, could choose to appoint someone else versus him. Now, that hasn't been the practice. They've generally always appointed the person that wants to be reappointed.
And you have that much background with his experience and all now.
He is, I think, I think from the JRWA, he's been probably the longest serving.
Yes, and you need some experience then.
Yes. Yeah, he's got, he's, he definitely has institutional knowledge.
Yes, he does.
Yes. Um, Mr. Chair, I think, um, I was the one that felt that we needed to have. Um, someone from the Falkland Center District to serve on the James River Water Authority. And at that time, we also talked about Mr. Chesser. Whether he was going to want to be reappointed or not, and by no means, I don't want to not say that he should. I would never, in my person, I'd never take him off. Um, but I, and then at that point, um, I had talked to a, a fuzzy person. Who's been working there for many, many years. And he was interested. And when we talked about it that night. A citizen heard that discussion, and I think we had someone else that said that they were interested. Um, I personally would like to defer it. I, I'm, I strongly feel. That we have the, the water system in Falk Union for forty-some years. We've had. Uh, people who've worked that system, they, they know the water system. I think they can be valuable. To the James Water Authority. Um, I think we are going to be, um, doing more and more as we had water come down two fifty and as we get it out of the James. And I just, nothing against Mike, uh, Sheridan, but I just feel like we ought to have a citizen.
Mike, do you want more responsibility?
Uh, I was, I was willing to do it. I mean, I will see to whatever the Board's thing is. I'm not gonna sit here and dig my heels in the ground and say I want to do it. I know that Louisa had come forward and they put a Board member on the commission.
They, I, I mean, again, I had discussion with Louisa County Administrator and, and we were trying to kind of be in, in sync on, on what we were gonna do. Whether we, whether we appoint a citizen representative or, or appoint a Board member. They haven't appointed anyone yet. And again, we, we had talked about that and, and since the Board has, hasn't taken the action at this point, if, if they go a different route, well. Louisa may go a different route as well. Um, to, and, and to go back to the, to the employee representative. To me, having an employee representative on the Board, again. So myself, I, I'm serving as the, the staff representative for the Board on the James River Water Authority. And to me, there's, there's, could be some, some oddities. And I don't mean oddities, just some, some indifferences of having another staff member on the James River Water Authority Board. But that's, that's just my own impression of, of if there's any disagreements on the Board or anything like that. That, that can cause a different dynamic between myself and other Board members on there. Um, a citizen representative, one hundred percent if there is a qualified citizen representative that wants to go on the Board. Um, I, I think that, you know, that's certainly up to the Board's discretion and the employee one's up to the Board's discretion too. I just. We typically on Boards like this, I, I don't believe that we've had. Staff on, on Boards, whether it's a planning commission, EDA, or anything like that. But a- again, that's entirely up, up to the Board.
Kind of conflicts would you foresee happening?
Well, I, I guess a couple of things. So, so if one, at some point in the future. Um, there's always been discussion of. Fluvial public utilities potentially, um, overseeing and monitoring. The system down there. Now, again, I don't necessarily, maybe, maybe a conflict is, is the wrong word, but. It's just from my standpoint. Being, being the over, being the County Administrator over that employee and that employee being on the same Board that I am. And then representing this Board, I think it could, it could cause some differences.
But we, the, but we as a Board approve. Everything, we approve things that come through the, um, James River Water. In that case, I mean, I came on this Board as an employee of the school system. And I voted on everything, cause I got, and before I even ran, I got the Attorney General. To, to clarify that I could make decisions on the budget and they were paying me. I mean, I was getting paid. Mike is the same way. So I don't, I don't know whether that's. I don't get the difference.
Comparison would be. I'm sorry, I didn't know I was gonna say that, but, uh. As a school teacher. It would be a different dynamic if I was on a Board with the superintendent.
And you could be.
Yeah, well. It's, it's difficult at times as a school employee. I think that that would. It would be difficult, but if we defer it, we would open it up to everyone to apply.
Um, yeah, I, if we defer it, and what you're saying. Um, I was hoping that I could get that person on the JRWA Board. Without going out and, and hunting, cause I, I, I just feel like that's the person that should. The Center District, uh, employees should be on the James River. Boy. I, I strongly feel that way.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, why don't you resolve that problem? Come January one, I'll, I'll be gone, you'll have a new member here. And you have maybe a, a new discussion and a new thought. And resolve it, resolve it then. I don't know, you have to do it right now. But I'd like to see somebody new get involved in some of these questions. Soon as I can.
Well, I mean, for the, for the next meeting, we have a lot of Board, Board appointments coming up. Yeah, we have a lot of Board appointments coming up on the next meeting, cause some terms expire December thirty-first. Now, if, if the Board says, well, we don't wanna, we don't wanna approve them at the next meeting, we can always. Hunt it to, to the first meeting in January, but normally, we would, we would. Any terms that are coming up prior to the end of the calendar year, we would have those up for, for, for reappointment, selection, whatever.
Yeah, I think we ought to resolve it on the fifteenth.
Yeah, and that's, that's what we're intending to do, bring, bring all those appointments forward on the fifteenth.
Did you pull up the, the two, uh, applications?
I, I, I don't have the applications on here because, uh, again, one of the applications just came in today. And the other application came in prior. Now, if, if the Board says. Bring forward a whole slew of applications and, and put a call out that, that there is an open spot for the James River Water Authority. Um, you know, we can certainly bring all, all those applications back at the, at the next Board meeting.
Did we do applications in the beginning? I don't remember.
Yes, ma'am, that's the only reason we found out about Mr. Dunning's.
No, yeah.
I remember, I remember his.
And how many people came up with him?
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, originally it was, um. Um, Mr., Mr., I think it was Mr. Gomez.
Yeah.
Um, Eric Gomez, he was, it was Mr. Chesser and Mr. Gomez. They were originally on the James River Water Authority Board with Mr. Nichols. And then Mr. Gomez, I don't know if he moved out of the area, and then that's when Mr. Dunning, I think we put a call out for. You know, another, uh, you know, someone, someone to fill that Board seat and Mr. Dunning had, had put his name in and, and there may be others as well.
I think there were two or three others.
So, so why don't we put out a?
Yeah, I, I, I mean, like I said, I can do that. And like I said, i- i- if I misinterpreted something at the last Board meeting, I apologize. I, we, we, we went back and looked at it and we just heard bring, bring this back at, at the next meeting, so.
Okay, so, so I will make the motion.
Does everybody else agree with that?
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Mr. Weaver?
That's alright.
Yeah, and, and I'll say from the James River Water Authority, we have some, you know, we have some pretty meaty, meaty decisions coming up here. In, in, in.
That's my one question is the meeting, this, this December meeting, is this gonna put us in a?
No, it's, it's not gonna put us in a bind. I mean, right now, the way we're operating. So right now, it's a six-member Board and currently, there's two Board members. We're two Board members short, one from each locality. So, so per our, um, per our legal counsel for the JRWA. Um, we are basically working on a quorum right now. If, if, as, as long as three Board members show up out of the four, we are operating on a quorum underneath that, since we're. One Board member had, had to leave, um, I think because that Board member moved out of the area and then, um, certainly the other Board member, um. With their passing, so.
Are there a lot of technical issues that are coming up that, and as you said, that there's a lot of decisions that need to be made?
I, I mean, from a technical standpoint, I mean. I mean, yes and no, I mean. We, we, we need, we need smart people on the James River Water Authority and we need people that understand. Um, you know, we don't necessarily. We, we don't need anyone that, that knows the full components of, 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 of working on an entire water system. But it, it's certainly helpful to have people that understand, you know, what's happening. But again, we have some Board members that. That have never been around the water system and, and again, they're representing the community and, and each, each Board member kind of comes with their own special skillset. A little bit and so, so again, we, we've got hired experts on the Board that provides the expertise. Whether it's from an engineering standpoint or permitting standpoint or legal standpoint. Um, you know, anything like that, so. You know, having, having smart people on the Board is what we need. Smart, well-rounded people is what we need.
And does it meet once a month?
It is once a month.
So that's the one thing about the technical stuff, the technical stuff, and that's what all the experts are hired for to do. I mean, yeah. Making sure they're not pulling the fast one, I guess, is the other part.
Yeah, I mean, we, we've got multiple consultants that, that are working on behalf of the Board and, and certainly too, once the project. After we get, get through this phase of, of, um, kind of archaeological stuff, you know, there's. You know, once we get to the part of, of construction, we will certainly have, um, you know, engineers, we'll have. Construction, uh, construction consultants, there's gonna be construction folks on there, so. You know, we do, we just need smart, well-rounded people on the. Alright, so.
I guess we're deferring that.
Where did we decide actually to put that inlet pipe into the James River there?
It hasn't been, that's, that's, that's what we're working on right now. If, if, if the board remembers, right now, the James River Water Authority, um, the, at the point of fork, we had some, uh, we had some, some challenges moving forward on that location. Um, so we, we've looked at alternative locations, we've been working on an alternative location, we, we've been going through uh, phase one archaeological work, survey work on an alternative location to make sure that that we don't run across anything that would be problematic or, or be a showstopper.
We hadn't discussed that for several months.
Yeah, I mean, because.
And I had somebody ask me, I didn't feel very good not knowing the answer.
Yeah, I mean, we've been waiting for this phase one work to be done and 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 they're just about complete. Um, actually, Ms. Harrison and myself went out to the site today just to kind of look at their, their, they're actually on the last parcel doing some of the last pieces of, of, of the archaeological work. And so once that's done, they'll be bringing a report back, a, a report, uh, with their findings, what they found from the digs that they did. They did soil cores, they did some other stuff, um, deep test trenching, that report will come forward and then that report will go, go before the Department of Historic Resources. Um, again, the Monakin Indian Nation for, for their oversight and review, and then certainly come back to the James River Water Authority for the ultimate decision on, on how we're moving forward.
What kind of a timeframe is there on that?
For, from what, what, what?
Well, you know, when are we going to get that pipe into the river?
So once we find, once we get this report back, let me say this, best case scenario at this point would easily be a year.
Oh.
At least a year at this point.
Well, have we gotten in touch with all landowners?
Yes, we, we, we've had lots of contact.
Like, like I said. So we've been kind of at a standstill to no one's fault, but it's really holding us up. Well, there's no one thing that you can point at, no decision that was made, no vote, no, no, nothing.
Once this next, once this last bit of survey work, work is done, that'll provide us the path. That'll provide us the, the decision piece for the path.
Alrighty, so I guess we are deferring this.
So, so did just, just for, for, make sure I'm absolutely clear on this. So we want to put a call out to, to citizens that this, this appointment is open for the December fifteenth meeting, which, which gives us about a week timeframe for, for individuals to, to submit.
Yeah, I think if we're going to do it where we do it to the citizenry, we open it up to everyone.
Yep.
And, and how, how you have a description of this position, what you're looking for?
Uh, yes, I mean, Ms. Solis and, and, uh, I mean, all the, the James River Water Authority Board description is on the website and it says, you know, what, what the requirements are, what the meeting times are. We have the meeting times on, on the website and again, we meet once a month, um, at nine AM, I, at the third Wednesday of the month or second, second Wednesday of the month at nine AM.
Okay, do you want to do a motion for this?
I don't think so. Or do, do we have to? You don't think you have to. Do we have to do a motion?
I think you could probably just defer, defer the appointment until the next meeting, until we get, um, other, other.
We did last time because I sat that one out.
Yep.
Okay.
So if somebody wants to make a motion to defer.
Okay, I move, I move the board of supervisors to defer the following board appointment to the James River Water Authority.
Have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Booker, seconded by Ms. Seager. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair of stains, this is four zero one. Alrighty, presentation. E, the V dot quarterly report, Bethel Caffialu.
Good evening, Chairman Sheridan, members of the board. It's good to see you in person after so long. My name is Bethel Caffialo and I will be going through, um, the latest monthly report for you guys and sharing what the updates have been since the last time I've been here. So, and you can scroll down a little bit to, um, smart scale. So we had a preliminary review for the, for smart scale round five back in September and discussed the different projects that we, um, want to look at crash data and things like that. And that is the three that's on here, the fifty-three in Turkey SAG, fifty-three, six eighteen at Martin's King, fifteen and six thirty-one, and then we also, um, the county asked us to look at fifty-three and Ruerton Lake Road at six nineteen. And so we just recently got some crash data and um, Administrator Doll sent me his availability. And so we're going to be setting up a meeting soon to go over some of that um, crash data review and selecting the projects that are going to be on smart scale around five, which will be, um, submitted around April of next year. And then projects, um, the bridge, um, rehabilitations at Brema Road, those were completed back in October, so that's done. And then we're still, they're still working on the preliminary design for the left turn lane at six hundred and six eighteen. And then at the bottom with the additional road projects, we've had our hired equipment contractor in Fluvan County for the last few weeks, so they've been working on um, some pipe replacements around Scottsville on Route Six. Um, we took a look at the sinkholes, the two sinkholes in Columbia. Um, and then they just also finished up today, the bank improvement at Route Six and six fifty-nine in Columbia. Um, and so the pipes and the bank have been completed, the sinkhole, um, with the one in the road, we, to be honest, weren't able to figure out what was causing that sinkhole. And so we ended up covering it back up and we're just going to monitor and see what happens. We, there, we didn't find any, um, failed drainage pipe or anything like that. Um, there were water lines right underneath, but, um, neither of them were damaged, so we're not sure what caused that. Uh, but then the sinkhole in the, um, in the parking lot of the store, there is a failed, um, drop inlet. And then we also discovered another drop inlet that had been covered up years ago. And so we have plans to come back later, probably in the spring, to replace, um, those structures um, and make it good as new for the, for the property owners there.
So for old Columbia Road right there, kind of the road where the little fountain was coming up.
We couldn't find anything. It's very odd. Yeah.
Trust me, it's plugged. I drive by it every day. I'll go ask about the bank.
Mm-hmm, yeah, we just finished that today. Yep. And then with our traffic engineering, um, we've had a lot of staff changes, um, in our traffic engineering section, so um, a lot of the, these speed studies and, and reviews that we have going on, um, haven't been completed yet, but they are on our list. So um, as soon as we get, um, the reviews back, we will share them with the board. Um, and I'll also be setting up a meeting soon to, to review, um, what options there are for it. Like a through truck restriction on Route Six twelve. And then with the county safety improvements, we've, we're still utilizing our radar feedback signs across the county. So if there are any other locations that, um, the board would like us to place them on, please let me know. We can do that. And then with our, like, land use, they've been hard at work. They've had, they've already approved fifty-nine permits in the last, in this fiscal year, or sorry, this calendar year so far. And our, uh, maintenance crews, Palmyra and Science Crossroads, they've also been, um, they've completed over two hundred work orders just in this fiscal year. So um, we're appreciative to them. And if there are any questions that you guys have or, or any areas that you'd like us to take a look at, please let me know. We'll get that sorted.
That's coming.
Mm-hmm.
Got you. And dear, is anybody else, anything they'd like to talk about? All right, uh, the group street name is Fayette, about a quarter mile north of where they did the bank. There's no stop sign on Fayette Street when you come out on the six fifty-nine. State Junction Road. It's on the opposite, the west side of State Junction Road, has one coming down from church.
Mm-hmm.
Coming through town, there's no stop sign right there.
Okay.
All right, the second one's going to be a little strange, but at Gum Springs. Y'all are putting in the circle.
Right.
Took down all the lighting last Sunday, the accident you heard about with me.
I'm sorry.
Well, if, if you could put some lighting up, something to catch people's attention.
Okay.
Because I started thinking, I don't, I can't think of an intersection in Fluvana that has that crossing roads like that. And, you know, with people traveling at fifty miles an hour, trust me, that, that's no fun to hit somebody broadside. And, uh, so if y'all put some rumble strips out.
We'll take a look at it, yeah.
Orange cones are everywhere. Because I was looking around, man, there's a lot of orange cones. All of a sudden, I went, oh, my goodness.
I'm sorry. Okay, I appreciate, we'll, we'll, I'll take a look at that.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Something up.
Only two.
Right, anything else?
Thank you so much.
Great, thank you. I appreciate it. You too. Merry Christmas.
Look forward to seeing you again. Merry Christmas, you. F. Yeah, uh, F, Children's Services Act Semiannual Report, Mr. Muller.
Okay, I've got new members of the board, Mr. Chairman. Um, so this is just, as, as you said, every six months it'd come up, just to let you know how the Children's Services Act is doing. Um, I know you have a very big presentation or discussion to do later today, so I'll be as brief and brilliant as possible. So, um, so it's going to go over our, um, amounts from last, uh, from last fiscal year. So last fiscal year, the board approved a little over three mil, three million dollars, uh, for us to spend on services um, and support for families and children that are, um, that are really need, um, our support and are having children that risk of being placed outside the home because of residential treatment or for foster care. And, um, please say that once again, uh, we came under, uh, we came under budget by about four hundred fourteen thousand, which has been a nice little trend we've been having for the past several years. Um, the only downside to it is that the amount that we'd spent last year actually, uh, was, um, quite a bit more than previous year. So on fiscal year twenty twenty, we spent about two point four million dollars. Um, this past year, we've spent about two point six million dollars. Now, when I talked with y'all back in May about this, I had mentioned that it's probably because, uh, we're seeing much, uh, much needed or more support and more requests due to COVID. So this doesn't come as too much of a surprise, but, um, it looks like this might be a trend that might be, um, we might be starting to see over the next few years. Next slide. So this is a, um, just, um, a measure or, um, a graph showing the amounts that we've spent for the Children's Services Act, uh, over the past, since fiscal year, uh, two thousand and eight. Um, ever since our high point back in fiscal year twenty, uh, twenty seventeen, which is about three point two million dollars, we were slowly going down until about fiscal year nineteen. Uh, web, uh, web, which point we were about a little, just a little under two point four million dollars. Since then, uh, the amounts we've been spending have been slowly increasing. Um, as of right now, based on the amount we're spending thus far this year, we are likely to meet or slightly exceed what we, what we already spent this year, if not more. Um, so I want to talk a little bit about these increasing costs because right now, what the board has been very gracious in being able to, um, fund, um, CSA fully ever since fiscal year twenty eighteen. But, um, it looks like that the trend, that trend of us actually going being under budget of being of, uh, having decreased amounts from year after year may not be happening as, um, much as within the next few years. So this, um, this graph here is just a, just a trend graph showing, uh, how much we've been spending on per month, uh, which has been about two hundred and ten thousand dollars. But as you can see on a monthly basis, that mon, amount is still continuing to go up month of, month over month. So this follows that trend of increased spending year over year. Next slide. So what's fueling the increase? Well, it, interestingly enough, we're not seeing more children or more youth, uh, coming into our program, being requested. That amount's been relatively stable year over year. What we have been seeing, though, is there has been an increase in certain specific expenses. The big one, um, or the two big ones that we've been seeing is, first one is for educational day placements. So
Educational, why?
Educational day placements. So if a child needs, um, so Fluvan County is required to, um, provide, um, uh, free education for all us fall students that live in the county. If a student has needs that far exceed with the, uh, with the school can actually, can adequately take care of, like maybe they've got um, some develop, developmental disabilities that require a lot of supports, or the child has um, some behaviors that are really disruptive to a normal classroom. Then at that point, um, the child may need to go to a private day school to be educated properly or adequately. So uh, when that happens, um, Children's Services Act is there to help, um, fund those placements.
COVID affecting that?
Uh, no, it does not appear to be the case. Uh, what we've been seeing, uh, is just an increase in, uh, students that, um, that require this. Most, on the past couple of years, we've been seeing an increase of children that have a lot of really like, um, extreme behaviors.
That what?
Behaviors. Yeah, I mean, uh, it, it can be anything from, um, just being extremely disruptive and not, and not really wanting to listen to the teachers. Uh, or it could be children that, um, have a lot of developmental issues that, uh, really get in the way of them being able to, um, educated well in the, in a public classroom. So they go to schools that have, um, more staff, that are more, have more specialized training that can provide a lot of these supports, um, especially for the children with developmental disabilities that requires a very unique skill set. And that's not something that you'll find typically in most public school systems.
And, and Mr. Muller, so I, I see it's nineteen percent higher. I mean, how, out of that nineteen percent, how much of it is just standard contractual increases in the cost of the services?
Um, not a lot, actually. So for, um, for the past, uh, so back in fiscal year twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, um, or actually twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, schools were only allowed to, um, increase their rates by two percent or a year over year. That was some, that was um, legislation that was passed through the General Assembly of the Appropriations Act. Um, this year, that increase, that rate increase or the rate cap has gone away. And on average, we've been seeing about between a three to five percent increase. There are a couple of schools that were outliers that went well above that, but even then, it's only maybe a ten percent increase. This increase that we're seeing here is because we're seeing more students that need the specialized educate, that are needing a specialized education. This year, and then this year is nothing different. Um, we were on, originally, we were on track to spend about a hundred percent of what we had, what we had projected. On the past two months, though, we have seen about a fifteen, twenty percent increase already. And we've got another six months to go before we see potentially more students come, um, that may need this type of specialized education. The other, um, big factor is an increase in the use of treatment foster care. Now, when a child goes into foster care, what typically will happen is that um, uh, social services will try to find a foster family in the county that, um, that, uh, that is able to, uh, take, to take the care, to take the child and support them as needed and whatnot. Unfortunately, the number of foster care families that we have here in the county is not as much as we would like. Um, so when, uh, when that happens, then, uh, we, they, we look into what's called treatment foster care. These are usually foster homes that have a little more specialized training, uh, have a little more supports, and they're run usually by a private agency. And those costs typically, um, so when those happens, the cost of housing that child tends to go up, um, by approximately, I'd say about twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars per child. If you've got, and when, and you've got three new children that require that in a year, that's an extra hundred thousand dollars that we have the budget for. So um, the number of children, and the challenge with that is we don't have much control over, uh, knowing how many foster children we're going to have come in. I mean, we can, we can vaguely predict it based on the number of kids that are at risk of entering foster care. I mean, that's what CSA does. But if, but we cannot control any instances where there is a, uh, child, there's a, a C O C P S report that's filed. Um, the worker goes out there, sees the conditions are in, just completely not safe and need, and that child needs to be removed immediately. Um, when that happens, I mean, we immediately have a, a new foster care case and we have no control over, um, how many of those we get per year. So who's that? Um, one thing I want to keep you on your radar, though, is, um, House Bill twenty-one seventeen, this was passed back in July. Basically, what this requires states or what this requires, um, is that the Office of Children's Services and the State Executive Council, who sort of oversee the whole, um, CSA um, or hold Children's Services Act statewide, uh, that they develop a plan to, uh, take those funds that we've been using for educational placements. And instead of that being, um, administered by CSA locality, uh, CSA programs in each locality, it will stand, uh, be transferred over to the Department of Education. Now, we, um, we, what that is looking like, we're not entirely certain. Children's Services Act is extremely complex. So um, making any big changes like this is going to take a lot of time, a lot of effort. There's a thirty-person work group statewide that is trying to, uh, figure this out. And they have until November of twenty twenty-two to do so. The reason why this is of interest to the board is that depending on how, um, they, and how this, um, transfer occurs, this may affect how much of a look, uh, how much of, uh, we would have to chip in as a county for, uh, these, um, for these educational placements. As of right now, the county pays approximately thirty-eight percent of each cost. Uh, depending on what comes out of this, that amount could go up or it could, or it could go less. Um, the bigger, the greater concern is that with a lot of these changes, inevitably what happens is The bigger, the greater concern is that with a lot of these changes, inevitably what happens is the, the local match tends to get a little increased. So, um, we're monitoring this. We have, uh, we have a statewide group that's actually entirely focused on this and, uh, we'll be providing you updates as that occurs. Next slide. Um, despite that, we are continuing to grow. Um, we have, uh, three new case managers. These are, these are the, our frontline workers. These are the ones that actually interact with the families, with the youth, um, that figure out what needs to be done to make, to get these families back into a good path again. So, um, we've got three more that are able to do this. So that gives us more capacity to handle, uh, handle more fam- handle more families. Um, in addition, uh, we're, uh, also actively using DocuSign for, uh, a good majority of the documents that we use, uh, to pay our vendors. Um, you all approved that last year or last year, um, through, uh, CARES Act funding. And I'm pleased to say that it's, it has been extremely effective. Our team, uh, our department has been much more efficient. Uh, we're getting, uh, vendors paid much more, much, much more rapidly. And from a contract perspective, we, the amount of turnaround it takes to get a contract approved is phenomenal.
It's, it's a huge time saver. I mean, you know, they have to come for me as a fiscal agent, go to the county attorney's office. I mean, just the time you save and not having to mail documents and the time spent touching them, it, it, it's a huge efficiency saver.
Yeah.
How's that work money wise?
With, with money wise?
Yes.
Um, honestly, it's saving me approximately a hundred twenty, a hundred sixty work hours at, 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 at least. Um, that's only for the past six months. Within another six months, uh, probably go up to three hundred and twenty, four hundred and eighty months. I mean, I, I've, I've got three months of work I can, I, I can find to do in place of what I've had to do in the past. So, um, it, it, in terms of productivity, it's, it is a huge, huge, um, benefit. Um, also, we've got our, um, new program assistant, uh, Nine Tariq Kabir. We hired her back in August and she has been slowly and diligently just, um, taking care of all of the documentation that we get. Uh, we get tons of paperwork. Uh, if anyone has ever visited my office in the past several years, they've been slowly noticing the fact that they've slowly, surely, they've been unable to see me because of all the piles that are in my office. Those have been going down, um, and in fact, I, I, I think I actually saw the surface of my desk for the first time. So, uh, she's very instrumental in that, which is very, which is great because when all the audit comes up again, we're going to be able to provide the documentation they need in a timely, efficient fashion, um, and, um, become even, and increase our, our compliance even greater than we were before. But those are the big points I wanted to hit with y'all. Um, I, at this point, I'd like to, uh, answer any questions that any board member may have at this time.
How long have you been here now?
I've been here for just a little under four and a half years.
I must say, I was impressed from the time you started several years down the road, how you took care of that budget because some of those bottom lines were cheaper and you were able to stretch them more. I, I do remember that much about some of your budgets as you came through.
Well, I do.
Really appreciate that.
Thank you very much. I can't take full credit though. Like I said, it's, it's, we're, 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 we're a system of care. So it's, so a lot of it is from our fat teams that make these plans. They've been able to find things that are more efficient. We've been able to use alternatives, um, to residential care, which is always, was always took a huge chunk out of our budgets. Um, our CPMT, uh, which, um, Ms. Booker has been, uh, your, your representative for the past four and a half years. They've been doing great work on, on. They've been doing great work on improving and modernizing policies.
Yeah.
So, uh, so, so, uh, so again, like it's like, I got, I got, we've got, we've got some great teams that have been working hard to, uh, really, um, work, work smarter, not harder.
Thank you very much. Appreciate everything you did.
Thanks.
For update. Next up is consent agenda G. Minutes of November seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, Ms. Lee's H. Minutes of November nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, elected officials gathering, Ms. Lee's. I, Flivana Partnership for Aging Mission and Vision Statements Upgrade, Mr. Spencer. Is there anything we want to pull?
Mrs. Spencer is coming with our Partnership for Aging, Vifin and Mission. Worked on it for a long time.
So the committee wanted us to read this out loud to make sure.
Go ahead. We got started on those at seven.
Our mission statement is to identify and raise awareness of the needs of the kind of Savannah County elders to advocate for the implementation of services to help ensure elders' good health, safety and wellbeing. So the vision we came out of that was to facilitate the creation and acquisition of a senior living community in Flivana County, offering a supportive living environment and inspiring a meaningful quality of life for elders. This community will offer an array of health care services and housing options, including independent living, assisted living, memory care and skilled nursing that will be available to all socioeconomic groups. Thank you.
And let, let me add one good, good note on top of this, which kind of addresses this. So just today, we received a application. So if you remember the, the Virginia United Methodist Housing Corporation, we talked about this back in probably about six months ago. They were interested in, in building, uh, independent living facility where Village Oaks is right there. Remember they proffered, um, a parcel there for a sixty-unit complex. They just submitted an application today for an S U P. They want to purchase not only that, um, the, the parcel for the sixty unit. They want to purchase the commercial parcel next door to it. And, and they want to build combined a hundred and twenty unit, um, independent living facility right there. Um, so that was just, uh, that just was submitted today. Um, you, you know, uh, you know, provide, you know, some i- inside recreation, uh, you know, walking paths, gardens and stuff like that. So that'll be coming to, uh, to the planning commission and the, uh, board of supervisors here in the next two, three months.
Of course, you know, the house, what we would like to do is more of a continuum of services. They were independent and so they're just going to do independent, uh, when out, out there would be interested in assistant living.
So, 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 so initially they're just, they're, they're interested in the independent living, but, but I would, I wouldn't say that they just kind of cut it off at there.
Yeah.
They, they certainly team up and, and you'll see, I, I, I had a chance to just read their, read some of their application a little bit and kind of some of the things that, that they do with, with some of the other senior centers. Cause they've got probably easy, easily probably, you know, fifteen to twenty other centers like this that they operate and they're the management company for. Um, so again, with not having something like this in the county, I think this will certainly be a big benefit.
Definitely.
County as we move forward.
And you notice we, excuse me, and you notice we use the word elders instead of seniors. Elders give you more of a.
Dignified.
Sophisticate, yeah, dignified sophistication says I'm an elder.
I haven't gotten there yet.
Yes, but, um, yeah, we, we're working hard to try to get some, some of these facilities here so that we're not, our people are leaving the county and having to go to Charlotteville and.
Stay close to home to families.
We want them close.
So hopefully, hopefully this hundred and twenty unit is, is a.
A way to.
It's, it's a way to kind of.
Get a start.
Achieve some of these goals.
Get started.
It's a start.
All righty.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, uh, uh, approve the consent agenda G through I.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Weaver has made the motion. Ms. Eager seconded it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion passes five zero. Now, I didn't forget, I'm flipping my paper over under unfinished business K. Hazard duty pay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be really, I'll, I'll, I'll try and be really quick on this here. So, so if you remember, the board approved, um, some hazard, hazard pay bonuses for sheriff's office and E nine one one. And I had made mention of it at the time, you know, we had to get the sheriff's office one done by November. Um, and then the board approved it for E nine one one. My intention is to come back at the next board meeting, um, to bring back a, a proposal similar to what, what the county did for, um, E nine one one. And, you know, I've been discussing this. We, we've kind of got a little internal team that we've been kind of just looking at some preliminary stuff, reaching out to some other, um, counties and county administrators that have, have been finding a way. Really, when you look into the meat of, um, ARPA and some of the, some of the language regarding eligible workers, the type of workers that qualify under there. Um, so at the next board meeting, I want to bring back a proposal for, for, for a hazard pay, um, bonus for staff. Um, and I'm going to try and make it similar to what, what the board did to keep it competitive and equal with, with E nine one one.
And the money's coming from where?
Come from the American Rescue Plan.
From COVID?
Yes. Um, so just like I was making sure it's want to kind of, so not surprising the board when it comes forward. But like I said, we're, we're trying to work through a lot of the, lot of the, a lot of the little nuances of it. And, you know, the one thing with it, you can't just necessarily throw out a blanketed statement that says just everyone gets it, but you have to precisely go through every single position and figure out and tie it to a way that how do they, how are they an eligible worker and how do they protect the health and wellbeing of, 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 of the community? And, and a lot of our departments did that in many different ways. So just wanted to just kind of give the board a heads up.
And what will you do for the person who doesn't qualify?
We're going to have to look at that and see. The only other thing I, I could potentially say from the board's standpoint is, is, is if there's someone that doesn't qualify, uh, unless those that don't qualify was funded from non-ARPA funds. But, but, but if, if you think about it from this, from this regard, let's just use Parks and Rec for instance. You know, Parks and Rec, we, we're not doing the same thing that maybe E nine one one was doing or the sheriff's office was doing. But when you think about, um, you know, saying that it was using the words protecting the health and wellbeing of the community, you know, we had different departments that were Parks and Rec. They're out there doing programs for youth when, when schools were closed down. Um, you know, doing health programs and, and, and providing some ways for students to get out. Um, and, and, you know, provide a, um, a path from, you know, having some, a place to put students when their parents are maybe working that they needed a place that there was maybe not, uh, a daycare or, or after school or before s- for school facility. I mean, certainly there, there are certain circumstances of, you know, in, in ARPA, it certainly discusses. There's, there's things that say about discussing and handling documents, paperwork. I mean, there's certainly many, many departments in this county that do that. So we're going to bring a proposal forward. We're going to go, we're going to be going through position by position and looking at every position and see how, how those positions fall into the ARPA, the ARPA funding and the terminology and the, um, and some of the, some of the things that they reference as being eligible workers.
Um, Mr. Dell, just last, I think was their last meeting, we, um, gave thirty-seven thousand, I think, for a study on, uh, payments to our staff.
Oh, yeah. Compensation study.
So should maybe you wait until we get that report?
No, no, because the compensation study is different than a one-time bonus.
Has nothing to do with the actual message.
Yeah, the compensation study would be more for.
Next budget season.
Next budget season in the budget seasons for the future. How should we be paying our staff? What staff positions are above, below, or right on, right on target for market, um, with, with our competitors around us? Whereas this is, is looking at, looking at it more from a one-time.
So this is more like a bonus?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, one thing I'll say on that is might as well start preparing that the schools probably come say if we give everybody a bonus, you know? If they come forward or, or do they have their own?
They have, they have.
They have their own.
Their own.
Okay. So that would be then. Okay, I, that's, I wasn't sure which one. All righty, so that, we're good on that. Mr. O'Brien.
I'm with the Flivana County Board of Supervisors entering to disclose many provisions of section two dot two dash thirty-seven eleven A eight, legal matters for, for code of, of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty as amended for the purpose of discussing legal matters.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. O'Brien, seconded by Mrs. Booker. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Steve, do you have audio yet?
I may have. I haven't tried it yet. How about you?
No, I don't have, I hear you guys, but I can't hear anything from the room.
Yeah.
Close meeting be adjourned. And the Savannah County Board of Supervisors convene again in open session. Irresolvent Board of Supervisors says hereby certified to the best of each member's knowledge, one only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under section 2.2-3711A of the Code of 1958 amended. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered at, in the meeting.
Motion made by Mr. O'Brien. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. O'Brien, second by Ms. Booker. Ms. Eager?
Aye.
Ms. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. O'Brien?
Aye.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Do we have a motion to extend the meeting to 11 o'clock?
So made.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Weaver and seconded by Mr. O'Brien. Folks, I apologize for being a little bit behind. We had some stuff we had to take care of and we were late getting back out of it. Alrighty. We'll now move forward with 11. Special public hearing on J. 2021 redistricting public hearing. Mr. Dahl?
We're gonna let Ms. Harris say.
Ms. Harris.
Well, Ms. Harris, do a lot of the heavy lifting, but I'm here to assist.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I believe Ms. Solis brought you the sign up sheet for when we get to the public hearing.
Both of them.
And there appear to be 15 people online. Alright, let's jump in. So, as you are well aware, we've been working on redistricting for a good part of this year. Most of the work that we've done has happened since September, but we started looking at the information back in April. Redistricting is required by Article 7, Section 5 of the Constitution of Virginia to redraw and reapportion, redraw its boundaries and its district boundaries and reapportion the population every 10 years and year ending one following the decennial census. The Constitution does require that redistricting be accomplished by December 31st of that year ending in one. I'm not gonna read all of the code there up there, but we have to do the redistricting, we have to reapportion the population, we have to have even equal population throughout any of the numbered districts that are chosen to be adopted. New this year for the population data, any prisoners housed in the locality are then removed by the Division of Legislative Services and counted at their home address at the time of their incarceration. I think I'm done with that one. So, a brief overview of the timeline. It seemed very important that we highlight the work that has been done so far, the opportunity for public comment, noting that there is always time for more public comment. But we did begin reviewing the data, the information from the census, monitoring the situation with the census back in March of 2021, when we found out that we would not receive the data in time for the June primaries and also in time for the June deadline for any candidates who wanted to run for the new districts that may have been drawn. April 14th and the 21st and May 5th, staff presented to the board in an open meeting what our findings were. And at that time, we had believed that the data would be delayed, but that we would still have it in time for the November elections. So, staff began doing some guestimating on what that population might be. We used building permits that had been issued between 2011 and 2020, and we were really darned close to what the actual population was. I don't have it right in front of me, but we weren't off by much. However, the board did decide to wait until the census data was available, so we stopped. In October, we came back before you and said, woo-hoo, the data's available, now we can really get to work. And at that time, we really dug in. The board appointed a redistricting committee, which then met on the 12th and the 15th of October. On the 20th, staff updated the Board of Supervisors, proposed new district maps, solicited board feedback, and scheduled community meetings. These community meetings took place on October 30th and November 1st in the Morris Room. And I think we had 12 people on Saturday, the 30th, and three or four on the evening of the first. On the, on November 3rd, staff again updated the board, discussed community feedback received in those community meetings, proposed maps, and, and listened to redistricting committee feedback. At that same time, we requested authorization to advertise a public hearing, to hold and advertise a public hearing, which is tonight. So, all of that's already been done. November 17th, at the board meeting, there was, again, a lengthy discussion about redistricting. We advertised for the public hearing on the 18th and the 25th, and here we are on the first for this special public hearing. It's special because of the time, not because of its timing, but because we're holding it outside of our normal third Wednesday meeting. Next slide, please. So, assuming the board chooses to move forward with the adoption of the ordinance before December 30, 31st, 2021, to be compliant with the Constitution of Virginia. On the 15th, the board will adopt a redistricting ordinance, and then there's other legal stuff that happens. So, this redistricting ordinance, let's see, let's drop down to the, what the county attorney will do. So, this will be submitted to the Virginia Attorney General, who will issue a certificate of no objection if there is in fact no objection. Any changes, we go through and update the GIS with the current legal boundaries, that sort of stuff is in there. It will be recorded in the official Board of Supervisors minutes. And then it is anticipated, if we keep to this schedule, that redistricting would be complete following the Attorney General certificate of no objection. Now, that's a lot of legal stuff that I can read the words up there, but if we want to delve into that, we're gonna have to turn it over to the county attorney. Next screen, please. There has been a lot of talk about what happens if, what happens if we redistrict and we redistrict to a number different from the current districts that we have? What happens to those two vacancies? What happens to the people who are currently sitting in districts that are then changed? And the big answer is, we don't know. That is the answer, and there is no guidance that seems to be forthcoming from anybody who actually knows the answer. It's a terrible answer to give, but it is the answer we have. However, the Virginia Code, Sections 24.2-226 and 228, do address this. So, if you are a seated member of a school board, planning commission, or Board of Supervisors, I think I skipped over one. Let me go back. That's not the one. The vacancies is actually where I was going with that. Those two sections actually address what happens to those vacancies. There can be a petition to the circuit court to hold a special election for the seat and the interim. The board can appoint, board, school board, or the board would appoint, would appoint the planning commission, can appoint an interim member who will hold the office until an election, and then the person who's qualified during that election. For incumbents, if you are seated at the time of redistricting, even if you are redistricted out of your district, there's a lot of districts in that sentence, you will be allowed to complete your term. That's for incumbents. However, for members elect, it gets a little fuzzier, and this is where we do not have good guidance. We don't have any guidance. However, we do have the Virginia Code, which says, "In office on the effective date of the redistricting ordinance," and this is where it gets a little bit squishy. One section, 24.2-311B, provides that the decennial redistricting ordinance shall take effect immediately upon adoption, which would be December 15th if we hold that schedule. There's another section, 24.2-129, that was effective this July 1st, that provides for certain covered practices. Again, that's a legal term that we'll have to turn over to the county attorney if we need a definition for that, which does allow for, let's see, practice that will take effect in 30 days, submit the proposed covered practice to the Office of the Attorney General for the issue of certificate of no objection, in which case that covered practice, in this case, the redistricting ordinance, shall not be given effect until the Attorney General has issued that certificate of no objection. So, basically, it puts a little bit of a pause on it between the time of the adoption to the time that the Attorney General returns that certificate of no objection. So, it would not be fully in effect until that time, and it will be written into the ordinance. Did I get that right?
Right. It, it, it shall not be given effect.
I got that right. Okay.
And what, and what Mr. Payne said, if you remember at the last meeting, is that realistically, there's a new returning general that's gonna be coming on January 1, and certainly this wouldn't be going, this wouldn't be, be looked, this wouldn't be looked at by the new Attorney General till after that point. So, as Mr. Payne said, we're not looking until potentially January, February, that there potentially could be a certificate of no objection.
That's correct. We anticipate that, you know, the Attorney General is likely to take the full 60 days, and, you know, they may or may not even issue a certificate, because if they fail to issue a certificate, then it's deemed to have been, been issued. So, it could just sit there for 60 days and then move on. And so, our, you know, our interpretation of these ordinance, of these statutes, is that the more recent provision under the Rights of Voters Act in 2029 for the Attorney General basically causes the redistricting ordinance not to take effect immediately, but it actually takes effect at the, at the time of the, the, that their certificate of no objection comes out.
But that could be challenged, of course.
That, there, that is possibly not the only way to read that. We, we think that's the, you know, the most likely reading of it. That's certainly our opinion of the way they ought to be read. But it, it, right, we, we won't know until sometime down the road when someone tells us what they meant, for sure. I mean, we, we, all we can do, we, we're, our, our best opinion is that that is what that means. It, it shall not be given effect. It's not effective.
Yeah.
Until then, and that the General Assembly, you know, is, is charged with knowledge of existing statutes, and that it has said what it intends to say. So, that's the best that we can give you on that.
Yeah. I, I don't know is not a good answer, but it's the one we have for a lot of these questions.
And it has been a consistent answer, and it has not mattered who we've asked that question.
So, before I move on to the population, the different maps of the population, I want to point out a couple of things. We have seen through the comments that have been received certain concerns, so I just wanna address just a couple of them. All comments that have been received since November 4th until noon today have been forwarded to the board and/or provided in written format, whether it was at a meeting. So, every single comment about redistricting has been given to the board, and all public comments are a matter of public record, whether they happen within a meeting or not. No comments were received after noon today. The public notice published in the Fluvaner Review invited the public to comment by email or phone. Any comments received after the publication of the Fluvaner Review, which was on the 18th, were submitted within the packet, so they were collected between the 18th and the date that the packet was compiled and then provided to you. So, I think that was the 23rd. So, all of those comments, and I think there were seven-ish of those. Let's see, already talked about that. And then, and I should have talked about this on a couple of slides back, and I missed it. There is no legal provision for delaying the constitutional requirement to adopt the ordinance by the 31st. That doesn't mean you have to abide by the Constitution. Your legal counsel has recommended that you do, but there is no legal provision. I did see in a couple of the comments what other localities were doing, so that there obviously must be some provision for doing that. There is not. There is no legal provision for delaying that. What you do with that is what you do with that. There just isn't a waiver. I wish there was. Okay, population. So, these two maps, well, it's the same map with different populations. So, the map on the left shows you our current districts, they both do, one with the population from 2010 and one with the current 2020 census population. Both of those population totals include the prison population, so that's raw data. It is before the Division of Legislative Services did their little maneuver and removed and reapportioned the prison population. In 2010, the census included the prison population, and that was what we were required to redistrict with. This year, that population has been removed, except for those folks who were living in Fluvan at the time of their incarceration, and they were reapportioned into the districts where they lived at that time.
Just one thing to just make mention on this map really quick, too. When you're looking at Palmyra and Columbia, keep in mind that, and there's a, there's a slide a little further along that, that shows this, but the population necessarily of Palmyra didn't increase by 16, 1700 people.
Yeah, we'll explain that in a moment.
Yeah. Yeah, again, the Department of Legislative Services, or when they, when they broke up the census blocks, they divided about, so let's, let's just say there's about a thousand population.
Eighty-four.
In, in the prison.
Right, just under eleven hundred.
Yeah, right under eleven hundred. So they put about eight hundred of that population into Palmyra, and then two, three hundred of that population into Columbia. So, so if you back out about eight hundred off of this Palmyra population of seven thousand, you know, you're back to about sixty-two hundred. That's really what the physical population of, of, of people that moved into the Palmyra District. And, and looking at Columbia, again, Columbia lost a lot of population. There were fifty-one eighty-seven, because they included about one thousand of the prison population. Now they're only included, including about two hundred of that prison population.
Ish.
But I'm, I'm a little confused. If, if, if the, you would, it seems to me that we would not have captured, say, all eleven hundred of the existing inmates that were there in our census, right?
We did not.
We did not.
We got seventeen in my district, and I don't remember they gave us.
Yeah.
So again, when you look at the reapportionment, there was about, I think it was about a hundred, a hundred that, that were added back.
Ninety-nine, I think, ninety-one, ninety-nine.
Twenty-one or twenty-five.
Something like that, yeah. Per district was pretty remarkably consistent.
So then the remaining growth in Palmyra was due to?
Actual growth.
Area growth.
You could probably say some of the, some of the extremities of Lake Monocello, and, and just probably two, just within the district itself.
Yeah.
So this is the current demographic makeup. This is the demographic makeup of our current districts. This is using the, is there any way to get the, the gallery off of that? Because, yeah, the adjusted population is over there, thank you. You can see the total population represented in the column to the left in red, and then the adjusted population all the way at the end. It is not adjusted here, because the two thousand and ten districts, let's see, make sure I don't mess this up. We couldn't tell where the prison population, what the demographic makeup of the prison population was. So it was difficult to put with the adjusted population of the demographic makeup. I hope that made sense. We, we did not have that information. So this uses the census designations. We only took it out as far as the two or more races census goes out to seven or more. I, I stopped at two more, so we have one only, one, two, three, four, five, six, and then the, the two or more races. So that's just our current makeup to give you some idea of where we're starting, and then what it looks like when we look at the proposed district, redistricting maps. So these two blocks, these are two census blocks that show what the census did as they counted the incarcerated population at the Women's Correctional Center. For reasons unknown, I, I do not pretend to understand the methodology of the census, of how they, they come to where these blocks are. But for our purposes, the women's prison parcel, the parcel of land sits wholly within the Columbia District. The census split that parcel into two blocks. I am fairly certain that the darker green there that has the seven ninety-six, there is no one living there inside the, outside the walls, but inside the fence. I'm pretty sure there's no one living there.
There is, there is, there's a water treatment, water sewer treatment plant, it's a lot of buildings.
So I, I don't have any idea what the methodology here was. What I do know is that they then apportioned that seven ninety-six, I think it's twenty twenty-three is the block number. They apportioned that to the Palmyra District, and the two forty-one or the two thousand and twenty-four block to the Columbia District. And that is response, that's why you see that big number in the Palmyra District of seven thousand ninety-six or whatever it is. It's because of that seven ninety-six that they stuck in the Palmyra. So knowing that, we had to make our adjustments based on the census block. We asked the question, could that be corrected? And the answer was, nope. So we did our best. Next, please. So these are the totals with the adjusted. So this has removed the prison population and then reinserted those individuals who were living in Fluvanna at the time of their incarceration. And I actually don't think I have that slide, or maybe I do on the next one, that shows, no, it's actually linked, I don't have that slide. It, it shows how many folks came back into each of the districts, and it was between fifteen and twenty in each district.
Seventeen, I remember.
Yeah, there was like seventeen, nineteen, twenty, sixteen, something like that for each of the districts. These are numbers that I know really well. On the right side of the screen, you'll see what the ideal district size, that is taking the total population and dividing it by the number of districts that we would like. We are required to keep the population plus or minus five percent between the districts with a total of ten percent deviation from top to bottom. And you'll see those numbers reflected in the, the proposed maps. Next, please. There were also lots of questions regarding the cost per district. So we, we run up, run up, that was great. We, we worked out how much it would cost in year one, and that would be including new election equipment, those sorts of things. And then what it would be for year two and, and the subsequent years that these districts would be in place. There is a difference of plus or minus twenty percent depending on the, I'm sorry, twenty thousand dollars of the insurance election taken by Board of Supervisors members or school board members. So we sort of gave you a mid-range in the chart itself, but know that that number could go up or down by twenty thousand dollars, not percent.
Yeah, if, if you look at right here, so for a Board of Supervisors member, the insurance cost, we use the mid-cost at about ten grand, and then for the school board, a mid-cost of about eighty-four hundred. So again, total cost of everything for year one included some one-time startup costs would be about seventy thousand. Let's just say we went with more than, more than the five districts. Well, and you have two new members that don't select insurance. Well, you can take twenty, roughly about twenty thousand dollars off the seventy thousand, so it'd be fifty thousand year one. Or the flip side of that is, say you have two new members that take family plans, you could add probably about twenty thousand on top of the seventy thousand. So it's going to be anywhere year one between fifty to ninety thousand, rough, roughly, that, that we calculated for the cost for additional district. And then year two is, is up, you know, slightly less, just due to the fact that, you know, you have some one-time startup cost.
Now, these slides are going to be a little bit difficult to see. This is the representation of the proposed six district scenario. And on, to the right of that is demographics information, and, and that will be true for each of the subsequent slides as well. If you, if we need to pull up the, the district map, we can pull up a, a larger zoomable slide. What was the, what's there beside the six district map? I think that's the proposed ordinance.
It is.
Okay, so that is the final ordinance, the, the final proposed ordinance that provides the legal description of each of the proposed districts. And so the next several slides are, are the remaining proposed district maps with the five district one, five district two, seven district one, and seven district two. Do we need to go any further through these?
Yeah, I mean, like I said, we can certainly go through, I mean, a, a, again, so, you know, as Ms. Harris said, this is the, the proposed, that the board proposed, the six district map. Again, here's the five district option one map, which, again, talking about the, some of the biggest, the biggest change in this one was the Columbia District kind of moves over a little closer into, in towards Lake Monocello in this area right here. And Fork Union gets a, a little extra population up in this block right here. And I know it's really hard to see on this map, we can certainly zoom in more if we need, need, need be.
So there was actually one more comment that I had seen repeatedly asked, and I meant to mention it earlier. And that is the question of the state districts. Again, it's a big we don't know, but what we do know is that the Virginia Supreme Court has appointed three special masters and given them thirty days to return to the Supreme Court with drawn maps, not proposals, but the actual three maps that they will come up with. That puts their deadline at December twentieth, I believe, is the date. Yeah, approximately the twentieth, which is after. We are currently, have it on the agenda for adoption. So again, we don't know. But one other thing we do know is that there is not a legal requirement to keep districts wholly contained within state districts, but there is a requirement to keep precincts wholly contained within state districts. So what that could mean, looking at this map, if, well, actually, let's look at the six districts. We're keeping it consistent with the actual public hearing. Except we moved it all the way back over to, so Columbia in this scenario would be wholly contained within a state district, but Fork Union would be split by fifteen. So in that case, if this is the map that is chosen and adopted, Fork Union would then require two precincts.
Assuming they, assuming they kept the state line.
Assuming that the state line, yes. Now, I don't know that this means anything at this point, but all of the proposed maps that were then discarded by the redistricting committee did keep Fluvanna whole in every single scenario. So we can keep our fingers crossed that maybe the special masters will reference those a little bit and keep us whole, and that would be really helpful.
And, and, and just as an estimate, too, we had estimated previously, if we had to have an additional precinct, the year one cost was around twenty thousand dollars. Year two and, and, and so on, cost was about ten thousand dollars a year. So again, here's five district map. One, again, we talked about Columbia moved a little, the Columbia District came a little closer over towards Lake Monocello, basically went west of fifteen. That's the biggest change. And then again, I said, there's a census block here up near around Taylor Ridge, Cunningham Meadows, and Fox Hollow that, that, the Fork Union District gained. In five district map, option two, again, the Columbia District still goes a little west of fifteen into the Palmyra District. If you remember, Palmyra District had one of the larger population gains. So in, in, in all scenarios, Palmyra had to lose. So again, with this five district map option, Columbia gained some from Palmyra. In addition, the Fork Union District needed to gain some too. So the Fork Union District gained some of this area right here, which pretty much goes up from the round, it goes up, the, the Fork Union District, it goes up to about the roundabout right now, but it would go further and gain some of the area of Sycamore Square, Broken Island area, which is, if my cursor will come back really quick, which is kind of right around here.
I don't know the Broken Island.
Yes, and this map just goes to Broken Island.
The river is the, the boundary.
Here's the river.
Horse, horse she got right there, top. Boot.
Horse head.
Yeah, the little horse.
Horse head.
Or the dragon head, if someone called it.
Dragon head, I like.
Somebody said we made a dragon.
So, so that's five district map, too. Again, that was one of the, that's the major change of the five-two map. Again, the seven district map, i- i- it's a little more complex to say what change in these. I mean, I, I'll, I'll kind of go through. I mean, the Cunningham District, for the most part, stayed, stayed the same. It's, it's certainly lost a little bit up near around the extremities of Lake Monocello. In this map here, again, a new district was, was created, which, which is this orange, which took a little bit from the Cunningham District, took a little bit from the Rivanna. No, actually, didn't take from the Rivanna, just maybe a little bit from Rivanna and from the Palmyra District, since Palmyra had to lose. And then there, there's this new district right here that, that was gained from Rivanna and Cunningham, because we had to gain a little bit from Palmyra. Palmyra then moves over and, and, and moves east into the Columbia District a little more. Remember, Columbia, for the most part, was right at fifteen before. That was roughly around where it came to under the current district map. In addition, the Columbia District also, previously, if you look at the cursor, kind of went around that area where it currently is. Under this scenario, it kind of runs down six and fifteen with this little addition going down around Shiloh Church and Central Plains Road. And then again, the, the Fork Union District moves up a little bit. So that's seven district, option one. And then seven district, option two. Again, two districts were created within Lake Monocello, roughly within the Lake Monocello and the outskirts of Lake Monocello. This new district was gained from getting population from Palmyra and Columbia, and a little bit from Fork Union. And then again, Fork Union, Fork Union didn't lose a whole lot of its southern population. It lost a little bit, pretty much a little north of, north of six and fifteen, right? Well.
Followed six, fifteen and six.
Yeah.
Then instead of going all the way down Shiloh Church Road, it looks like it cuts across Turner Road.
It does, that's correct. So again, that is seven district map, option two. And, you know, we're, we're certainly, certainly happy to answer any questions of the board. And Ms. Harris, do you have anything else?
I was going to say in summary, but then I realized that I hadn't actually said this yet, because I've done this presentation so many times that I forgot to say at the beginning. In the creation of these maps, the things that had to be held in mind were that the districts had to be compact and contiguous, must have equal population as, as much as is practical. And that was plus or minus five percent deviation with a total of plus or minus ten percent from largest to smallest, using clearly observable boundaries, without splitting any census blocks and maintaining historic neighborhoods. There were few other things, but those were the, you know, we, we, we went down the checkmark and made sure that we had the requirements met for each of the maps that were drawn and proposed to you. So I, that's not in summary, because I forgot to say it at the beginning, but to wrap up, are there any questions that I can answer for the board?
During our meeting with the legislators, we asked them some questions. Did we hear back from any of them or not?
I did not, no.
The only thing I remember them saying is that they trying to use the guidance of keeping counties totally
Yep.
whole in the drawing of the state map lines, and that was.
Yeah, from the State Redistricting Committee, you know, through all of their variations of maps that were published, Fluvanna County was wholly.
In every single one.
Single map, within one, one states.
I was all excited when I saw the originals come out, I'm like, yes! And then no.
I remember coming in to talk to you about that. You were excited, and all of a sudden.
And, and, and just one thing, too, for the Publix, for the Publix information, you know, the, the Redistricting Committee was made up of Mr. Weaver and Mr. O'Brien, Ms. Harris and myself. We're, we're, we're not the Redistricting Committee, but we certainly assisted, helped and, and provided guidance that we, you know, how we could, and then also.
Jason Overstreet.
Jason Overstreet and, and John Michael Whalen with the Planning Department. They handled a lot of the GIS aspects of the map.
Yeah, the actual physical creation is, is all them.
And, and, and the one good thing with Jason Overstreet, you know, he had been through redistricting previously. One, through some other localities, and he also previously worked with Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission, where he did this also previously, so.
And the last little bit, because this has been a, a, a hot topic. I did tally all of the comments. So there were one hundred and thirteen comments received outside of a board meeting. So the ones that were inside the board meetings, whether they were public comments or now public hearing, are in the minutes. So I do not have those tallied. But one hundred and thirteen comments were received outside of a board meeting, either by phone or by email. Eighty-two comments were in opposition to the six district map proposal. Ninety commenters preferred the five district scenario number two as a first choice. Ninety commenters preferred the five district scenario number two as a first choice. Eighty-three commenters were in favor of five district scenario two as either a first or second choice. Three commenters preferred seven district scenario one as a first choice. Nine commenters were in favor of seven district scenario one as a as a first or second choice. Fifty-seven commenters were in opposition to seven district scenario one. One commenter preferred seven district scenario number two as a first choice. Seven commenters in favor of seven district scenario two, wherever in the mix. Fifty-seven commenters in opposition to seven district scenario number two and one commenter who preferred the six district scenario proposal. That's a wrap up of all the comments received.
I know that Mr. Fiesel had gathered, and in your tally of one hundred and thirteen, Mr. Fiesel had gathered about.
That's included, though. Those names are included in that one thirteen, yes.
Some of those were also ones that sent us emails.
Right, and so.
Yes.
These are unique.
There were a few. There are a few. So in the, all of the comments have been gathered into a PDF and placed online, and you will see duplicates. If we received duplicate comments from people with even a small change, they were both included in there. And there were several people who commented. There was two people who commented who changed their minds in their comments. So the first one says one thing, the second one says another thing, but then they kept adding information. So there might be three comments from one person. They are all included in the comments. So the one thirteen might not be one hundred and thirteen unique individuals, but they are one hundred and thirteen unique submissions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Harris.
Thank you.
We do appreciate your time.
Alrighty, now we will begin our public hearing. I will ask that you please keep your comments to five minutes on topic and direct it to the board. I will say I have a list. Some of you I see have written on the side of it, not speaking. I will ask if you'd like to speak and just shake your head no, or do you stand up and come to the microphone? The first person I see is Ms. Lindsay Knowthing. You had said you did not want to speak. Knowthing, you don't have to. You want to? Okay, yes, ma'am. Okay. Yes, ma'am. I will put you down to the bottom. All right, next up is Ms. Jackie Bland. You had said you did not want to speak. Okay, all right. Kathy Swenson Miller.
Good evening. Kathy Swenson Miller, ninety-four Fairview Lane. You will be making a decision on December fifteenth that will affect Fluvana for the next ten years. I think this board has been effective in working together and making good moderate decisions. I hope that in the next ten years, we will be focused on good land planning, especially in the five community planning areas. As well as to focus on the quality of our schools and economic development. Why propose six districts, which could lead to gridlock when we need the board to make difficult decisions? Plus, paying close to seventy thousand dollars or more to add one district is not good use of Fluvana taxpayer dollars. We do not know the rationale for the for the three Board of Supervisors for leaning towards six districts. And we just heard one, one person has been in favor of six districts in the public. Please do what's right for Fluvana. We need stability, not chaos. My vote is for five districts. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, if I mess up somebody's name, please forgive me. Dever Neil is the last name. Ma'am, I'm sorry. Is it Dale?
Oh, yeah. My Spanish teacher's sitting right back there. I don't want to tell him myself.
Okay, so my name is Marie de Vernay, and I live at eleven eighteen Montanero Road in Palmyra. And just what I wanted to say is that I think the fact of having six supervisors, it would not be a wise thing to do. Because in some decision, we could end up having a gridlock, like Kathy was just saying. And also, I guess I'm kind of conservative in some ways, but I think the way things have been going in Fluvana with five supervisors is working quite well. And I think the map five two would certainly would be, you know, the one that I would be going for. And it would mean no changes, and it would be saving money for all of us. So I'm strongly, you know, endorse that one. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Ms. Miller, before I go any further, did you have a preference five one or five two? Five two. All right, next up is Raynell Stokes.
Good evening, ma'am.
I'm Raynell Stokes, and I live at three Smokewood Drive, and I am here to support five district option number two. And I'm expecting or would hope that you would do what is right for all of the issues and ideas that may come to you. That will represent all of our students, all of our citizens of this very precious county. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Next is Ashlyn Fayard. I recognize that name.
Hi, my name is Ashlyn Fayard. I live at six seven Dustin Drive, and I am here today to support District five two. I all the information that I'm going to be saying I got from my PVCC government class. So I just want to point out that I think six districts and seven districts are just wrong because of how little Fluvana has grown in ten years. Previously, Fluvana has, you know, we've seen a lot of growth in the last ten years. It's not a lot. I don't think we have enough people to be able to support these seven and six districts. I also believe that it would cost a lot of money that a lot of the taxpayers would have to pay. Adding members would cost money and adding precincts would cost money. I also disagree with splitting the lake. It is a big question of what is going to happen to these newly incoming school board members, specifically Mrs. Jacqueta Murray Key. No one knows what the, how that's going to look, and I think that with splitting the districts, it would be unfair to her for her to have to run again. I also agree that six districts is two is even, it would be a gridlock a lot. It could be hard to get things done. And I also would like to point out that public opinion is very clearly pointing towards five districts and steering away from six and seven. So I agree, or so I believe that District five two is the best option for our redistricting of Fluvana. Thank you.
Next is Blake Hilliard.
All right. I'm Blake Hilliard, live at one eight two Villa Circle, two two nine six three, and I will be pledging my support in a redistricting plan of five two. Immediately, the issues of the price tag come to mind. Just adding one district seems to have an incredibly high cost, and for two, it's even worse. And with the issue of just one, if you want to compromise on price, we see that there's the risk of a deadlock. And even to add to that matter, we see public support seems to be pretty low in regards to actually adding one to two new districts. And as my colleague mentioned before, the addition of splitting the lake would call into question the position of Drake Murray Key, who I have assisted in the past. And that's why it's an issue of special importance to me. Regardless, I hope you all make the best decision within your capabilities and for the best interest of the county.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Lynn White. Almost said Ms. White. Heard I have it.
I'm Lynn White, and I live at three sixty-four Ballenger Lane, and I would really like to urge the board to abandon consideration of six districts. I think it would be very ineffective governance, and I would most support having five districts, particularly the five two plan. I too think that the way that we have previously been doing business in the county has been effective. And I also think that not adding districts and not adding cost to the citizenry would be a good thing. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Next up is Joseph Creasy.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
My name is Joseph Creasy. I'm residing at thirty-eight Jennings Drive, Palmyra. I am here tonight to urge you to continue with the five districts for the county and the choice of scenario two. This choice for our redistricting purposes is particularly essential. Given the fact that there is unfortunately not enough time available for the public to give due diligence to a thorough analysis of the choices at hand. And that the board has not, and maybe cannot provide enough information to fully support individual choices to date. Nonetheless, we do have a more relevant and insightful working familiarity with the five districts environment, and thus, this is a better choice overall under the over under the currently imposed circumstances. Each citizen represented in this county is owed the simplest, best understood information available. Please respectfully do your duties as an elected official and provide the more familiar of familiar five district scenario two choice. Thank you.
Mr. Creasy, I see your mask. Thank you. Next up, Valerie Palamount. Like I said, if I mess up somebody's name, please forgive me.
You said my name correctly. Thank you, and thank you very much for listening to all of our our comments. On November twenty-second, I sent the following to the board.
I'm sorry, you name the address.
Valerie Palamount, seventeen Fleetwood Drive, Palmyra.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
On November twenty-second, I sent the following to the supervisors, Eager, Sheridan, and Weaver. And I want to read that tonight to make sure it's included in the public record. First of all, please explain your reasons for supporting six districts in the twenty twenty-one redistricting. I am opposed to six districts for the following reasons. Number one, there is an unnecessary additional cost to add a sixth district. Tax dollars should be used to improve county services, not to increase the government. Secondly, six districts will inevitably lead to tie votes on important county decisions with no action being taken. When this happened in the past, six, when we had six districts in the past, delays in action came at a considerable cost to the taxpayers. And three, six districts will require additional elections to replace duly elected officials. And comments previously to that address those those issues. To quote Dr. Phil, we all know Dr. Phil, what were you thinking? For goodness sake, I support map five point two and believe map five point two is the best option for the taxpayers of Fluvana County. I will remind you that you all represent the taxpayers of Fluvana County. There are no changes to elected officials in five point two. There is no significant cost to the taxpayer, and five point two minimizes any potential legal challenges to the redistricting. I also understand that at the November seventeenth, twenty twenty-one Board of Supervisors meeting, there was some confusion as to whether comments received in my two cents were to being considered as public comment. We would like to know as taxpayers, how do we reach the board if my two cents is not the way to do that? I will remind you, I have, I brought with me my little copy of the Constitution of the United States. In Amendment one, freedom of speech, which addresses freedom of speech and freedom of religion, you have an obligation to represent the taxpayers, the people who elected you. That is your role as a government official, and please do the right thing and listen to the taxpayers of Fluvana County. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, Dr. Linda Staker.
Good evening. My name is Linda Stager. I live at twenty-nine forty-nine Ridge Road in Palmyra, Virginia. I came out tonight just to voice my support for the redistricting map five point two. I don't think I need to reiterate all of the arguments that have already been expressed about reasons not to have six, not to have seven. And so I just wanted to say I'm in favor of five point two, and thank you for listening to us.
Thank you, ma'am. Mike Fiesel.
Mike Fiesel, twenty-five Vine Ridge. Now that I find out that the previous letters are going to be in the record, I can be pretty brief. Just to remind you, seventy-five people said no on six, said yes on five point two. You know all the reasons why. We now know that one person out of one hundred and thirteen who have commented supports six. We also know that I don't think there was a single letter to the editor or anything else that supported six. I hope you do what the people say, because this is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Cindy Gerard.
Hi. Cindy Gerard, eighteen Fleetwood Drive. Same as everybody else. Five two, please. Definitely not six. Have a good night.
I can tell you one thing. I do appreciate that. Oh, my goodness. Ms. Whitney Johnson.
Good evening. My name is Whitney Johnson. I reside at sixteen forty-six Cloverdale Road in Brimmo Bluff, Virginia. And I also won't hold your time, but I will say that I'm in favor of five point two scenario, and I oppose six. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Tell Mom Dan to say hello, please. Eight, I'm sorry, Mr. Eric Anderson. I'm reading the numbers now. Apologize.
I don't go by number.
Eric Anderson, fifteen Fleetwood Drive. I'm here to say that the six district plan is horribly bad. It's so bad, it's really hard to imagine anyone having a good reason for supporting it. It's designed to lock up the county. It's by far the worst of the five plans that are out here. My favorite is five two, but any of the other four would be superior to six. The second thing I want to say is that I'm most concerned, and Ms. Harris's comments early on have relaxed me a little bit about this. But I'm most concerned with conversations I've heard at Board of Supervisors meetings and rumors flying about, that the board seems to think that if they appoint maps that are sufficiently different, that this will empower them to overrule the voters who have just elected a month ago, a new slate of people to various positions, to unseat people who are currently in office and to appoint folks that they want without any election being held. I think that that's that sort of overt power grab cannot stand. The people who are elected, and I'm speaking as someone who ran for office and did not win. The people who are elected or reelected deserve to be sworn in. It sounds like you won't have a new legal map before they are sworn in, and. sworn in, and therefore they will be incumbent seated people. So, so like I said, I'm a little bit relaxed about the idea that you'll just set up whoever you want to be in charge. But please don't consider the idea that you might be able to appoint friendly Board members to be a reason in favor of one of these bad maps. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Next, James Schoenster. Ha, ha, ha. I'm sorry.
My name is James Schoenster. I live at 843 Jefferson Drive. And I'd like to ask a few questions, with the first two being rhetorical. Is the Board interested in hearing and deliberating on the concerns of the public, or simply giving the appearance of doing so? And my second point was really just reiterating a lot of the things that other people have said here, and I'll summarize it by saying I prefer 5-2. So, the question I really want answered is if the three members of the Board who put forth the six district plan can each give a compelling explanation. I've been listening and heard nothing of substance to date. What is there to gain? Help me and the other engaged citizens here and on Zoom understand why, because right now, the only reason clear to me is that you wish to ignore the population and set our county up for 10 years of obstructionist politics. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Oh, man, I put my check down. Almost skipped you, Mr. Garcia. Put my check down too fast.
Rudy Garcia, 802 Ravenna Woods Drive, Fork Union District. I've been working with you folks for a long time, but I have to tell you that the last couple of meetings of this body have been frustrating. We've been hearing a discussion between y'all and between us to you about redistricting that has just baffled me. Listening to the conversation about support for six districts leaves me extremely frustrated. The three supervisors who voted to officially propose a six district solution, as several of my fellow citizens have mentioned, have not given a compelling reason for that choice. That makes no sense. What is the compelling reason for creating a map that may lend itself to gridlock? What is the compelling reason for adding a district that may require up to three appointments to office? If this stands in January, you'll only have to appoint two people, but you still have to appoint something, right? Potentially a Board of Supervisors, school board member for the newly created district, and potentially a new school board member for Palmyra. It may be that there is some simple compelling reason, but if so, why haven't you shared it with the community? You've had adequate time to do that since you put this map up. Is there some other reason? Who knows? Some of the conversation I've heard over the last three weeks indicate that this is intentional, that it is intentional to provide an opportunity for other people to be appointed without being duly elected. When you see a map that takes the most highly concentrated area of the county and splits it in two, it raises questions and concerns. One of the things that Ms. Harris pointed out, that the, that the maps should be communities of interest, they should be compact, and they should be contiguous. I think that fairly well describes Mr. O'Brien's district right now. Under the six and seven scenarios, it no longer describes that district. In addition, the county attorney has suggested that minimal changes to the districts will reduce potential challenges and possible litigation. That seems like a compelling reason to stay with five districts. What is the rationale to go to six when over the past 10 years, growth of 6.3% translates to less than 200 new citizens per year? These are the questions that have been running through my mind since the first meeting that I attended here, after listening to several hours of conversation between you and the public, and between you and each other. When will you answer them? I hope soon, because the citizens of Flavanna deserve transparency, and we're not receiving it. In addition to compound these issues, the state still hasn't completed their maps. We may be required to add one or more precincts, depending on how the state maps come out. If we have seven districts, we may have to do seven additional precincts. I'm not nearly as concerned about the dollars that go along with that, but it is surprising that Mr. Weaver voted for six when it costs money. After all these years of listening to him say no to spending any money for things that were really important to the county, he says yes to this. Thank you.
Next up is Charlie White.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Charlie White. I live at 55 Kendall Court in Palmyra. I too, like most of the folks here, support the proposal 5-2, and am opposed to the six district plan. One of the criteria that I really haven't heard addressed in any of the comments I've seen is the potential for creating political polarization in these districts and these proposals. Every day in the news, I'm dismayed at the federal level to see what polarization we have in our Congress. And in some states, it's a drag on democracy, might even be a threat to our form of government. And we're not immune to it here. With, here, I think it's a mix of suburban and rural communities that might provide the opposite polls. And they do have competing interests. If we, to the extent that we draw district boundaries around these communities and separate them, we're just setting the stage for polarization. So I would propose and support a plan that mixes the constituencies in as many districts as possible. And I think 5-2 does that most effectively. I'd like our supervisors, members of the Board of Education, all of our commissions and boards that are appointed, I'd like each of those folks to have reason to study and understand the opposing points of view in these two constituencies, and be able to make a decision based on balancing them. And not just focus on one or the other. So again, I think 5-2 is the way to go. Thank you for hearing me.
Thanks, sir. Patsy Brown.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Weaver and other members of the Board, my name is Patricia Brown, and I live in the Cunningham District at 22 Mulligan Drive, Palmyra. Thank you for holding this public hearing about redistricting of the magisterial districts for our county. I have two comments. First, I come before you tonight to express my support for map 5.2. I do so after studying each map, including to ask questions of Mr. Eric Dahl and Ms. Kelly Harris at one of the community meetings, which they answered in detail. I have listened to commentary from other citizens that appeared before this body on November 17th, and I listened to your comments during that November 17th Board meeting. My reasons for supporting map 5.2 are that it appears to be the one that is the least disruptive and the least costly. Second, I ask you to delay your decisions until after the state maps for the House and the Senate districts are redrawn, so that you do not have to start all over again when this process is completed. We know that other counties in Virginia are delaying their decisions for these reasons, and I implore you to take a reasoned approach and delay as well. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Nolting. You're now back to the top. You're at the bottom of the list for... Would you please come to the microphone, ma'am? Name and address.
Lindsey Nolting, 1317 Stage Junction Road, Columbia. I'm for five. I missed the big...
One or two, ma'am.
Big maps at the library, so, and squinted, I couldn't see
Yes, ma'am.
the distinction.
That's the ones we have outside, if you want to look at the ones when you leave.
Yes. I would... I was impressed by Mr. Creasy's emphasis on the familiarity of the five district plan, given all the unanswered questions. I think it represents the least potential harm. Usually, I'm for fortune favors the bold and some changes, but in this case, I think that change, if any, should come in the following 10 years, as we probably grow in population and might need more supervisors. Thank you for your work on this, and for your work in the next decade, perhaps, less hasty.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am.
I'll go with two, but because of...
What you've heard everyone else. Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Nolting. All right. Oh, I'm sorry, Perry. I did the same thing I did to Mr. Garcia a minute ago. I put a check mark beside Ms. Johnson's thing before she spoke. I apologize for that.
I'm Perry Johnson. I live at 229 Pine Lane in Fork Union. I'd like to encourage the Board to move to a five district plan rather than a six. I do not have a preference over which one. Even though I serve on the school board, I'm speaking tonight on my own behalf. I have long admired this Board's ability to balance decisions and politics and personalities, and make good, wise decisions for Flavanna, and I hope you've heard me say so from time to time. I worry that six districts will unseat that balance of power on this Board, and certainly on the school board, where things are getting less settled all the time. And so I very much ask you to not make it such potential for tie votes for yourselves or for the school board. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Jackson.
Jessica Jackson, 41 Allen Lane. I've listened to the meetings from October, and I was at the last meeting. And so, one, I just want to comment that I ask you not to delay and disobey the Constitution, but that you would do what the Constitution says, and go ahead and pick a redistricting map. I don't think you teach outshrewd and well when you decide, well, I don't like it, or so I'm not going to do it. I think you have to be a good role model, and I think you need to go ahead and pick definitely map 5-2. That's the one everyone's been saying. At the last meeting, I heard one of you say, well, that we could kind of tweak 5 to kind of make it more agreeable to those of you who want six, and that's not a good option either. So I would say, please don't try to tweak it so that you can please each other, but pick the one that we have been saying that we want. Also, at the last meeting, someone said, well, the school board, they went on to close the school, although everybody came over there and said, don't close the school. And that was, what I interpreted from that was that, but we can go ahead and pick map number six, although everybody's come over here and choose map 5-2, and that's not responsible either. Everyone has asked why those of you chose, who chose six, have chose six. We haven't had an answer. And for the last two weeks, I've been wrestling with it, and I've come up with some answers. But tonight, just because I don't want to hurt anyone, I don't want to be divisive, I'm going to keep those to myself. I'm going to tell you that if you all pick map six, I'm going to do everything I can to bring, to get it overturned. If this way, I can object at the legislature, that's what I'm going to do. I will go, I will contact the National NAACP, and I will tell them that you all have normally chosen to choose a map that would take away the only African-American elected official, and that makes no sense. As an African-American woman, I often get really frustrated when I tell people about the racism that I've encountered, and how they dismiss it, or say, well, I don't, I didn't understand it, but I do understand it. And oftentimes, African-Americans, we are seen as expendable, that we are insignificant. And if you choose map six, what I feel that you're saying as well, you know, Ms. Key, we can get rid of her, because what I want is map six. So, you know, we, she's not that important. The fact that people voted for her, that's not important, because what I want is more important. And also, Dr. Kelly, I know that, that a lot of, on the school board, that there's often contention, and that if he's taken off the school board, that some of the members who are very close to some of you, they would have control. But as an African-American woman, and just as a person, I feel that too often, African-Americans, we are looked at as lesser than, and that, you know, it doesn't matter, I guarantee you, or I won't guarantee you, but I would feel that if Ms. Key was blond headed, and her last name was Sheridan, no one would choose map six. And so I'm asking you, you know, choose 5-2. If you don't, I personally, I'm going to do whatever I can to do to get that overturned.
Anyone else wishing to speak at this time? I'll, I'm going to get everybody in here, and I apologize to the folks online, but y'all are sitting at home in your comfortable chairs. I'm going to get the folks that are here, then we'll work our way down the line with you guys that are online. So I apologize for any inconvenience now.
I'm Susie Morris. I live at 6840 Thomas Jefferson Parkway, Palmyra, Virginia. As a lifelong Flavanian, and someone who has worked in this county with the young people for over 50 years, and has loved this county, and has done the best I knew how to do for every unique individual, and I've always felt that you look for the best in everyone. We are unique. Flavanna County is unique now. Why do we continue to be so divisive? It just breaks my heart. Let's fight for more unity in this county. Let's fight for a better Flavanna. Let's stop trying to divide this county. Let's not divide it by suburban or rural. We all moved here, or we stayed here, and we're committed to this county because we love it. And basically, I have gotten along with most everyone in this county for years. Why can't we respect each other? Why can't we put aside these differences and work for each other, and work for this county? I wish we could get as many people out as we have tonight for this comp plan that's coming up, which looks forward to 2040, so we can plan the best thing that we know for this county. The economy and the environment are tied together, and the people of this county need to be tied together. How can we expect our kids to respect each other, and to work for unity, and to work for this county, and get it to be the best it can be? If we as adults can't espouse unity rather than divisiveness, we're not perfect. If we as adults can't espouse unity rather than divisiveness, we're not perfect. None of us are. We're unique. Everybody's different. That's what, when we work together and we share and can communicate these differences and work them into some plan for the best for us, for our future generations, and for this county. Please, let's work together. Let's pull together so we get the best out of each other and out of this county. I, I just, when I hear this divisiveness, it just tears me apart. It really does. I think you can see that. I don't like it. I don't want it brought into Fluvana. I want us to work together for the best for everybody, and the only way we can get the best for everybody is to work together and to seek what's best for this county. Thank you.
Young lady, head your hand up back here.
Hi, my name is Andrea Overweg. I reside at 2 Poetan Road, Palmyra, Virginia. I have been a resident of Fluvana County since 2001. My husband and I have been homeowners since 2002. I have a daughter who attends the high school. This is the first time I have ever been compelled to speak out at a Board of Supervisors meeting. Now, I haven't always agreed with your decisions. I haven't been happy with some of the bad financial decisions that have been made, including not partnering with Goochland to build the high school, some of the delays on the water. But today, I'm here as a voter and a constituent and an American, and I don't want my vote nullified. I voted for Ms. Jakata Marie Key. Her election was won by nearly 200 votes. She did not qualify. There was no qualification for a recount in that election because it was more than 1% victory. I was gobsmacked to see that this board elected a six district scenario, one that would not only lead to deadlock. It's not even financially prudent. Now, I grew up in rural Michigan, and I liked living in rural Virginia. I had the very good fortune to have parents who instilled in my brother and I the values of hard work, the values of speaking up and standing out and being civically engaged and speaking up about injustice. This is an injustice. Removing an African-American woman in a majority-white county out of a seat that she fully, fairly won is absolutely revolting. Now, I'm not wired to be cynical, but my dad taught me not to take a wooden nickel, and I didn't fall off the turnip truck. I have a real problem when I think about the fact, and again, one could draw this inference, I am not cynical, that the county Republican chair lost his seat, that, for an open seat on the school board to Ms. Jakata Marie Key. And if I were cynical, I would think that this is an attempt to overturn that election by putting in people more favorable to the majority members on the board. That on its face is so grotesque. I cannot believe that the board would do something so, so morally wrong. I would like to appeal and beseech your sense of integrity and the virtues. You are elected officials. You took an oath. Our votes mattered. Racism is real. She won that seat. I want to see the board do the right thing. I want five, too, is my choice, and I want to see the board make this decision, taking into consideration overwhelmingly, people do not support the six district scenario. And I picked up a tremor from the last meeting that there was some kind of farcical assumption that the people who didn't come and speak out somehow, the majority of the people are basically okay with this sister, six district scenario, which is why the vast majority doesn't show up, so they're okay with this six district. I don't think that is the right inference. The people who care and the people, or the people who are here tonight and the people who've sent in the comments to MyTwoCents, the people who've sent the emails, I really urge the board to do the right thing. The world is watching. Really, they are. And I have, just to underline what the lady who said, spoke before me, I've got hustle, and I will not go quietly. I will call Richmond. I will call every press, and I'll sign on to the NAACP. I'm good with that. Okay? Thank you very much for taking my comments.
No, ma'am. You've already had your time. Okay, well. I'm sorry, but each person gets their segment. Anyone else in here wishing to speak? Come on down.
Chris Fairchild, 5470 Thomas Jefferson Parkway, Palmyra. I'm a two plus two equals four guy, even if it's against the ways that I think and feel, and some things just have to be factually said when they're not accurate. We talk some, we hear a lot about, does Fluvana need another representative with only 6% growth over the past 10 years? And let me say this. I am, I am not necessarily in favor of six. I am less in favor of five. But do we need that representation? Many comments suggest six seats is foreign to our government and our citizens. Comments about familiarity with six and so on. However, in 2001, the Fluvana Board of Supervisors voted to go to six 20 years ago. That was well before the growth boom that led to the real estate crash. Huge growth in Fluvana, 28% in those 10 years. The Board of Supervisors voted in 2011, 10 years later, to go down to five seats. So 28% growth between 2001 and 2011, plus 6% between 2011 and 2021, equals 34% growth over 20 years, or since we first had six seats. I stopped by on the way here to confirm, went to the front door of the county office building and peeked through to all the pictures of the Board of Supervisors over the years. From 2011 back, the farthest one I could see, seven pictures of Board of Supervisors, generations of Board of Supervisors, had six people in the picture. So this is not foreign to Fluvana. We, we hear a lot about gridlock. Six-member board results in gridlock, three, three, three voters, no, and therefore progress will be stifled. In the 10 years between 2001 and 2011, there were 15 three-to-three votes for one and a half per year. This does not mean revised, this does not mean revised proposals, say, developer sharpening his pencil for the next attempt did not pass. Some say, an even number of board members creates compromise. I'll give you a personal example of that. I was on a 2011 Board of Supervisors. That was the last one to be six. I was on for one year, appointed, and then redistricted out when we stepped down from six to five. When we voted on the budget, I came in, we had been at 54. I think there were some, I think the number was 60, since that some wanted, and just by my simple math and meeting with the stakeholders, I came in at 57. So we had two people that wanted to stay at 54. No, I will not go up. They've not made a good case for why we should spend more money. We had three people that wanted 60. And no, we have to go here. I will not compromise. I think we had something like two intermissions that night when we, we stopped so people could go take a leak and whatever, somewhere around midnight or so. I think we left that night. And in the end, I had the F-bomb dropped on me by one person about midway through, and because I wouldn't move off of 57, my numbers, my math just put me at 57. The stakeholders that agreed that they could make adjustments put us at 57. At the end of that night, we voted for a 57-cent budget, and the, those on the conservative side, on the lower side, didn't have their taxes raised to 60 cents, and those on the liberal side, as it was posed then, who wanted 60, didn't have their taxes kept at 54 cents. That is, that was forced compromise. If there was an odd number of board members on that board, you would have had 54 or 60 cents. To the race part of, you know, to consider the race of a politician, and where you draw the lines, is gerrymandering. It's illegal. You just can't do it. If you, if you, one of you is to say that's a consideration for you, talk about lawsuits. And the two people, every person who got a vote for that school board seat that Jakata won, voted for a black person. The person who did not win is Daryl Byers, a black man. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Is there anyone else present that would like to speak?
For the record, my name is Wayne Kempagna. I live at 79 Hidden Valley Court, Palmyra, Virginia. I live in the Cunningham District. And I'm one of those who was in support of moving to seven districts, and in preference seven, too, because that keeps the Board of Supervisor elect for that district within the district. So I understand some of the concerns have been expressed about the school board representative that was for the Rivanna District. So I'm not really clear on how some of those points are going to be fully addressed if you move to six districts, but I'm not totally opposed to going to six districts. But I believe the time has come in the county to increase the level of participation at both the Board of Supervisor level and the school board, so we have some greater number of representation. Now, I have lived in this county since 1990. When I moved here, the population of Fluvana County was 12,000 people. We're just under 30,000 people today. There was a period of time when Fluvana County was the second fastest-growing county in the Commonwealth of Virginia. The number one was Loudoun County. So we have seen periods of growth, and as been pointed out, this board, this county has had six representatives before on the boards, and they have operated, in most cases, without any type of gridlock. If you want to look in a neighboring county, look at Albemarle County. Albemarle County has operated with six districts for at least the last 30-some years that I'm aware of. They seem to function over there just as well. So I think there are certain fears because there's always the unknown when you move forward and make some change. Personally, I'm not in support of staying in five districts. I think we need to move forward to either have six or seven for the reason of moving, increasing the level of participation in these board positions in the county. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else in, in the room wishing to speak at this time? All right, now we'll move forward with those that are online. Ms. Harris, I have no idea how we're going to do this. Folks, we're going to try to do it where they can get one at a time. I can read Derek Dahl.
No, right here.
Okay, I can go right down that list? Okay, Ms. Millie Fife, if you would unmute, unmute, unmute yourself, ma'am. Uh-oh. Okay, I can read this one.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. My name's Millie, my name is Millie Fife, and I live at 889 Jefferson Drive, Palmyra, Virginia, 22963. I appreciate the work that the staff and the Board of Supervisors have done on redistricting, and I'm grateful that residents' comments from MyTwoCents have been added to the county website. These show overwhelming support for the five-district proposal scenario two option, as had the comments this evening. I also favor this proposal. But insofar as how the redistricting process has played out, the buck stops with the board, and I have several concerns about how you have handled it. I call your attention to the Board of Supervisors Code of Ethics, which each member pledges to adhere to. It states that you will, quote, "involve citizens in the decision-making process and welcome divergent points of view," end quote, and, quote, "carefully guard against conflicts of interest or its appearance in our actions or decisions," end quote. And yet, the redistricting committee was composed of two Board of Supervisors members who had a vested interest in what was decided. I'm not saying or implying bias, but if your job is affected by an outcome, how can you be completely impartial? Having a member of the public on the committee would have been prudent. Furthermore, it was not without prompting, and only recently, that the makeup of the committee was publicized. Communicating this from the outset would have given the public a direct route for feedback. The Code of Ethics states that the Board of Supervisors will recognize and support the public's right to know the public's business. There were two opportunities promoted for the public to view maps and to ask questions, but it was stated that there would be no presentations at these times. The fact that only 15 people reportedly attended does not, I believe, reflect a lack of interest, but the fact that it was not clear what advantage there would be in going versus looking at maps online and calling or emailing questions or comments. How did these further our right to know? The Code of Ethics states that you will, quote, "be a good listener, carefully considering all opinions and points of view," end quote. But you elected to make a proposal for redistricting before holding a public hearing. It might have saved time, but it came at the expense of showing you had an open mind before the hearing. The language used to frame this doesn't matter, i.e. that the sixth district was a, quote-unquote, "proposal" and not a done deal. You've already held a vote to state your preference as a board. The Code of Ethics states that you will respond to the public in ways that are complete, clear, and easy to understand. And yet, the data shared in the maps changed on a regular basis in both the board meeting packets and the fan mail. At first, there was no demographic breakdown. Then, data sets were left off some of the district maps, but not all, so population totals didn't add up. I understand that there might be a need for changes and that errors occur, but if these happen, this should be relayed to the public so that they're not relying on outdated, incomplete, and possibly erroneous information by not reviewing each new map. The Code of Ethics states that board members will, quote, "actively promote public confidence in county government through our actions," end quote. And yet, communications in Fan and on the county website have consistently urged the public to use MyTwoCents as a means to speak to the board about redistricting. Fluvana residents have provided an opportunity to address the board during the public comment periods of your meetings. Many residents have communicated with you about redistricting by one or the other. Then, at the November 17 meeting, the county attorney stated that a, quote, "public hearing is the medium by which the public's will is expressed," end quote. The county administrator said his submissions through MyTwoCents are not part of the public hearing. The staff reported in tonight's meeting package notes that, quote, "all comments addressed to the board become public record," end quote. I've invested a lot of time in trying to understand how, when, in what form, a resident's voice will actually register with the board. If there is this distinction about the time and place you will consider our public will as being expressed, then you have failed in making that clear. The Code of Ethics concludes with this line, as will I. It calls you, quote, "to honor and uphold these principles, ever conscious that public office is a public trust," end quote. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Okay. Angela Chainer?
Good evening, everybody. This is Angela Chainer, 604 Troy Heights Lane, Troy, Virginia. I'm in the Columbia District, and just adding MyTwoCents in five scenario, too, I think it's really important that we look deeper into the background on things, on how these changes will affect incumbents and also the individuals that are in line for upcoming office holding. Thanks for hearing me out, and I appreciate the showing tonight. I wish there were more citizens here to give you their thoughts.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Next up, I believe is Ms. Barbara Carey. Ms. Carey, can you hear me? Name and address, please.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Two sixty. New Fork Baptist Church Lane, Palmyra, Virginia, two two nine six three. I support five point two. It's more efficient and cost effective. So please support five. Scenario two for Flavanna County. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Carey. Tell the kids to say hello, please.
Mr. Sheridan, one thing if I can, just I see some people raising their hands up here in the thing.
I I let me explain. Folks, what we're doing is we have a list of those who are guests and I'm going right down the list of guests so that I don't miss anyone. I know you're raising your hands, but I'm going to go down this list. I don't know if y'all can see it. Uh, but Mr. Ben Hudson, you're next.
Oh, good evening, board, and thank you for for the opportunities to address you this evening. Um, Ben Hudson, two seventy four Lexi Lane in Palmyra. Um, I'm here to to urge the the board to um. To approve or to support uh five districts scenario two. And um. I just want to kind of reemphasize a couple of reasons as to why I I believe that this is the best option for Flavanna. Principally because uh. It's an easier configuration uh to manage and to administer. Secondly, uh, creating an additional or additional um voting districts has the potential to dilute the voice of. Of um certain categories of people minorities. A six district scenario lends itself to gridlock and can potentially grind the county operations to a halt. And then the the last thing I'd like to emphasize is that of um. Of finances, increasing the number of districts uh. Could result in additional cost to the taxpayers. Uh, in by way of additional expenses, including salaries. Uh, to Board of Supervisors, school board members, additional administrative costs, so on and so forth. And certainly, I think the board wants to continue to be prudent and uh very attuned to those kinds of costs. Again, thank you for the opportunity to speak and I'm in favor and urging the board to support five scenario two. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Next, I'm gonna take a wild guess. Is that Ms. Armstrong? I see. I see Bertha's iPad. Ms. Armstrong, is that you, ma'am?
I can do. Yes, I'm I'm on, but I was observing, but I do support five point two.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm very, I was very impressed with all of the presentations that was put together tonight. And I I do pray that um, you know, you. As a Board of Supervisors of this county, which a lot of people gave a lot of praise to Flavanna tonight. That you will continue to support this county and keep it um, keep it of as to what people have said we are about. Because that has been one of my always presentations when I ever rep go out to represent the county is that. I've always felt that the board supported the people of the county. And I felt that and I also feel that we can continue to do that now. Um, and I felt that you have listened to the citizens of the county before. And I do hope that you will continue to listen to the voices of the citizens of Flavanna. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, next up is Kathy Burrier. Ms. Burrier. Okay, so I will, if you if you want to come back on later, Ms. Burrier, just make sure you raise your hand when it's later on. Ms. Hoffman, I see you on there. I'm not sure if you want to speak or not, but it's under guests, so I'm gonna ask.
No, thank you. I'm just watching.
Yes, ma'am. I figured that. I just was gonna make sure I asked. Uh, hang on, you moved on. Mr. Dan Shute, Shutey. Okay. You you raise your hand later, Mr. Shutey. Uh. Mr. Miles, I'm guessing you're watching. If not, you raise your hand later on. Uh. De Wells iPhone. David Wells.
Major Wells.
Okay, Major Wells. Major Wells, if you want to speak, you can come off of mute. If not, I'm gonna go on down to Kelsey Cowger.
I am just listening. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Maureen and Steve Smith. I see you right there on the picture. Mr. Smith, did you want to speak? Was that a no? Nod your head for me. That it wasn't no. Okay, yes, sir. Thank you, sir. I'm sorry. We're gonna get this stuff figured out. This is.
Oh, we we would like to speak. I'm sorry.
Oh, you want to speak? Okay, Mr. Smith, go ahead, sir.
Wasn't sure which button to put mute for. I'd like to thank you for giving us the opportunity. Uh, it looks like a pretty full crowd there tonight. By my count, there were twenty four people speaking, only one in favor of a plan other than five two. Um, I'm fully in favor of five two. I think six is a a path none of us want to go down. Uh, saving money would be one of the minor issues, but saving money is always a good thing. Uh, in fact, if you wanted to take the money you save. By not going to six, why don't we put something together like an old farm day and bring the community closer together? Uh, but we are here supporting five two and not six, and I thank you for taking the time to listen to us.
Could you give me your address, Mr. Smith?
Oh, it's six Sunset Court. Palmyra, Virginia.
Wow, if that's a view at your backyard, that's a nice view. Uh, I'm sorry. I just had to make that comment.
All right, that's what that is our vector.
Oh, we can't. All right. Uh. Is Paige Gifford? Ms. Gifford?
I'm here. I'm here. I'm just hitting my buttons. Um, yeah, I was I was listening uh to everybody's comments and I don't, I I had all the comments I was gonna work out and. Basically, I just want to say that I was impressed with um what everybody said and they said it for me, so I just want to add that I am in favor of five two.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Peg and Roger Burns. Or pay, is it, yeah, pay, peg.
Thank you. Uh, we support five, we support five two, and we sent an email in earlier. Thank you for doing this this evening.
Yes, ma'am. All right, where are we? Phyllis Wilson? Phyllis Wilson?
Yes, uh, this Phyllis Wilson, uh, I am not for this.
Address, please.
Oh, seven Kanawa Court, Palmyra.
Yes, ma'am.
So this is Phyllis and Ron Wilson and um, we uh would be in favor of five two or one of the seven. But probably five two would be our first choice.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, Sharon Harris.
Hi, thank you. My name is Sharon Harris and I live at nine Pine Mill Circle, Palmyra, Virginia, and. I just want to reiterate what folks are saying tonight, and I respectfully ask that you consider the will of the people and of the voters. And that you adopt uh the five district scenario too. Thank you.
I'm sorry, folks. I just got to laughing because I see Mr. Garcia down here watching online. No. I looked at it. Wait a second. All right, that threw me for a second. S Rad F, ma'am, I see your face right there. You gotta unmute. You gotta hit, ma'am. There you go.
I got it. Hi, Sandy Radford. I really don't have any questions or statement. It's my first experience with the redistricting since I moved to the county. And thank you for the opportunity to to come in and watch you all.
Address, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry. One twenty one Mulberry Drive in Palmyra.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Sure.
Sue Wolf.
Uh, hi. Uh, so many articulate arguments have been made for uh five uh dash two. I agree with that choice, so um. I am at seven Dover Court in Palmyra, the Rivanna District, and also in favor of five two.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Sue Liberman?
Yeah, I just want to support and give kudos to all of the people that have spoken tonight. Uh, they've certainly represented my views and thoughts more than adequately, and um I am a five two supporter.
Thank you, ma'am. Wayne Nye.
Good evening, everybody. Wayne Nye, one seven six Village Boulevard. Um, I've listened to everything that everyone said. I I hope we all leave this meeting. Uh, respecting each other as fellow citizens and as good. Good neighbors in the county of Flavanna here. It sounds like to me that most what what most folks want uh right now is five two, and for that reason. I support it. I hope that we'll all think of you and act of you, as Abraham Lincoln once said, and. Learn to disenthrall ourselves from ourselves so that we can save and move forward with our county. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Um. Is that all of that? Coach Pace was on there. Coach Pace? I don't know if he dropped off or.
The only last one on here that I see is it's it's name is Watching, but that's the only other.
Yeah, there's one other guest that has not spoken that um.
Okay, yeah, audio is not connected, so. I think that's, I think, Mr. Chairman.
I was just gonna text him and just say that you want to talk. I don't know. Internet in that area can be sketchy sometimes. Oh, I'm sorry. Never mind. I can't do this. All right, all right. Um, seeing no others, is there anyone else here inside that showed up since we started that would want to talk? All right, seeing none, I will now close the public hearing. I'd like to thank everyone for coming out, for being civil. And for remembering that we all have a job to do and we all have different people that we talk to all the time. So I appreciate it. Please drive safely home tonight. And thank you again. So I will now close the public hearing. We have no motions before the board tonight. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion made by Mr. Weaver, segmented by Mrs. Booker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I didn't hear very many ayes. Opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion passed five zero. We're now adjourned. Ms. Johnson, before I forget.